Senator Roebuck, and we are so happy that you, like myself, are chairs in spite of all the problems we have. We're chairs of education, and thank you. And we really hear people all the time talking about equality or equity in education, neighborhood schools and other schools, charter schools, which are the same, which are neighborhood schools. And we really want to talk about, and you know, as I said at the last hearing, we're getting rumors, people feel that there's a concerted effort not to educate children, especially minority children, who are the majority of our schools. So we have to do something to keep people realizing that there are many of us, and the majority of us, who are fighting for good education for all children. And so that is the reason that we wrote this resolution, and that is the reason why we're here today. So I want to thank everyone, and I'm going to thank you, Councilman O. Would you like to make an opening statement? Thank you very much. So we're going to certainly call on our first panel, Dr. William Height, Ms. Farah Jimenez, and Jerry Jordan if he's here. Thank you. Congratulations on your overwhelming election, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you. And we also note Cheryl Parker is here as well. Thank you. Feel free to begin your testimony, and thank you.
Good morning, Councilwoman and Chairwoman Blackwell. It's always a pleasure to be in front of you, as I know you have spent your entire life caring so deeply about the most vulnerable in our community, and I share that commitment, and I'm grateful for an opportunity once again to be before you. I also want to say good morning to members of the Committee of Education, Councilwoman Cheryl Parker, wonderful to see you in this new role, and Councilman David O. My name is Farah Jimenez, and I'm a member of the School Reform Commission of the School District of Philadelphia, and I thank you for an opportunity today to testify before you. I'm joined today by my fellow commissioners, Sylvia Sims and Feather Houston, and I believe Commissioner Bill Green is on his way. And I would also like to acknowledge, and take this moment, to acknowledge our chair, Marjorie Neff, and thank them for their critical service to the students of Philadelphia. I come before you today at a time when cooperation and transparency between our two institutions is quite strong. The October signing of our intergovernmental cooperation agreement has already kicked off significant new and substantive communication between us, and this has included three council-driven briefings on critical work happening in the district, financial planning meetings, and liaison meetings. So I thank you for your continued partnership in these efforts. We are also grateful for the support council members have been showing our schools. Council members have been visiting our schools and using their positions to promote public schools to Philadelphia parents and communities, and your support here is critical and invaluable. Together, I hope we can continue to shed light on the incredible things happening in the Philadelphia classroom. And your support is a testament to our educators and community members, who even in Philadelphia's most difficult educational climate, continue to provide outstanding educational opportunities for students. I'm here this morning with the task of introducing Superintendent Dr. Height, whom I have great confidence and am quite honored to serve alongside. However, before I do, I'd like to address some of the many questions we've received regarding the implications of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruling on February 16th. The case revolved around Section 696I-3 of the distress law, which gives the SRC the power to suspend requirements of the Public School Code and related regulations. The case was brought by a charter school after the School Reform Commission used these powers it was granted by the legislature to limit this charter school's enrollment and to establish academic achievement targets for the school. The Supreme Court ruled in agreement with the charter school, stating that the law itself, as granted by the legislature, was too broad, and therefore constituted an unconstitutional delegation of power by the legislature to the School Reform Commission. The School Reform Commission is considering filing an application for reconsideration or reargument with the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. We would do this because the stakes are quite high, and if I could, I think it was quite appropriate, the way Jerry Jordan characterized the ruling, as a double-edged sword, because in fact it is a double-edged sword. We believe, again, that the stakes are high, and we believe that reconsideration is properly in order. And so regardless of whether we file this application, we will comply fully with the Supreme Court's ruling, and we will no longer exercise our power to suspend as constrained under Section 696I-3 of the distress law. While this will impact the way in which we carry out our responsibilities, it will not impact our resolve to bring fiscal stability and high-quality educational opportunities for all students to Philadelphia schools. The School Reform Commission has used its suspension power judiciously, and the power has been a critical tool in achieving needed flexibilities in a time of financial distress. This is clear when I review the three critical uses of this provision. First, to provide principals with the flexibility to choose who is in front of their students in their schools. Second, to responsibly manage charter growth. And third, to close poorly performing charter schools and ensure charter growth is tied to high quality. Indeed, over 60% of the times that we have acted upon a suspension, they were done in order to strengthen charter authorizing. Our use of the special powers provided to us has been driven by our mission to bring fiscal stability to our district and high-quality educational opportunities to all Philadelphia students. So regardless of this ruling, our determination has not and will not change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also note, joining us to my right is Councilwoman Maria Canone Sanchez, and to my extreme left, Councilwoman Helen Gimm. So again, we thank them for being here, and your role is to introduce Dr. Height. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairwoman Blackwell. Excuse me. Good morning, Chairwoman Blackwell, and members of the City Council's Education Committee. I am Bill Height, Superintendent of the School District of Philadelphia. This morning, I'm going to share some testimony, and then will be available for questions along with several members of my staff. The City Council has made substantial contributions to the school district and the children we serve, and we remain deeply appreciative for your continued support. In the second half of the 2015-2016 school year, today's focus on the status of our public schools is extremely timely, so I thank you for providing that focus. While our efforts to review programs and services in support of students remain ongoing, I would like to highlight in my testimony today investments and initiatives in support of our goal to provide all students, regardless of where they live, with a high-quality education that prepares them for higher education and the workplace. The School District of Philadelphia is committed to a vision of equity for all students. We define equity as providing every child with a great school close to where they live. Our core belief is that a child's zip code should not determine the quality of their education. Yet, for too many children across Philadelphia, this is too often the case. Students who show great academic potential but live in less affluent neighborhoods most often have to, must often leave their communities to access rigorous and quality programs. As an educator, as a parent, and as a leader of one of the nation's largest public school systems, I am deeply disturbed by what I know is the daily reality for many students in Philadelphia. Waking up early to catch public transportation across the city just for a chance at a better education, or the alternative, walking a few blocks from home to enter a school that is not providing the education that child deserves. Our vision of equity, as outlined in our action plan, includes a four-pronged strategy around college and career readiness, grade-level literacy, strong school leadership and instruction, and adequate funding. Our four anchor goals are as follows: All students will graduate ready for college and the workplace. All fourth graders will read on grade level. All schools will have great principals and teachers. All funding needed to create and maintain great schools will be met. This is our path towards great schools in every neighborhood. Our strategy for ensuring high-quality and equitable academic opportunities focuses on continuous improvement and targeted high-stakes decisions, such as school transformation initiatives, high-performing program expansions, opening new innovative schools, and consolidating school programs and buildings. Our school redesign initiative, which we launched last year, offers both new plans for teaching and learning from the ground up by promoting the passions of educators, administrators, families, and community groups. The initiative continues this year with three additional schools in the redesign pipeline. Regarding major initiatives and investments in support of our anchor goals, I would like to share the following. We've expanded the use of Navyadz, a software system to guide students and parents through the college selection and career assessment process. Our college readiness efforts are also targeted in the early grades. For example, in the next few weeks, third graders across the city will be able to visit a college campus. We want to start them early with a college-going mindset. And as I mentioned, we also want to make sure that students are ready for college. Last fall, we offered high school students the opportunity to take the PSAT. It wasn't a requirement, it was just an opportunity during the school day. More than 25,000 students took advantage of that offer. With support and assistance from local philanthropic, from the local philanthropic community as well as the Read by Ford campaign partners, our comprehensive citywide effort to improve early literacy rates is underway. We provided 40 additional reading coaches and equipped all kindergarten through fifth grade teachers with laptops. In addition, we implemented assessment tools to assist teachers in monitoring student progress and differentiating student learning. As you will recall, we were forced a few years ago to drastically cut the number of music teachers district-wide. We have since restored those numbers to pre-layoff figures and hope to provide students with more opportunities to experience music education and more staff, with more staff available to teach them. Several years ago, we had as many as 25 schools on the state's persistently dangerous list. Today, that number has dropped to zero, and we are providing more emotional and behavioral supports to our most vulnerable students. To enhance our financial stability, we received local tax revenue increases from the city of Philadelphia, cigarette tax, and reauthorization of a 1% sales tax. We restructured our debt to achieve savings and ensure adequate future financial resources, particularly in light of the state budget impasse. We accomplished healthcare savings through improved verification methods, and we renegotiated contracts. We've also enhanced our cyber charter enrollment validation measures. You will hear more detailed information from my colleagues about other efforts in these areas and our system of grade schools plan. However, I'd be remiss if I did not note that we frequently encounter circumstances beyond our control that impact our ability to serve students and to plan appropriately to make much-needed investments. For instance, we're now in the ninth month of the state budget impasse. With only three months left in the school year, we are operating with less than 45% of our budget. I would also like to take this opportunity to address our teacher vacancy and substitute staffing challenges. Neither situation is acceptable. We have been working urgently to get teachers in every classroom. I acknowledge the challenges and obstacles we have faced this school year, and I also believe that we have taken the necessary proactive strategic steps to launch a strong start to the 1617 school year. In regards to the teacher vacancy rate, we have hired about 900 teachers this year, including more than 120 since December. We've also extended more than 200 offer letters. The number of available teachers is far lower this year than in previous years, and we have been looking for teachers outside of the normal hiring season. We are in a difficult teaching market. This is part of a national problem, and just last week, just a few months ago, it was acknowledged that Baltimore City Public Schools, for instance, had a much smaller district started this year with more than 200 vacancies. The point is Philadelphia is not alone in trying to address this issue. In past years, we were primarily filling openings with teachers who had been laid off for budgetary reasons. For the first time in many years, we now have more openings available to outside candidates, but for many traditional job candidate pools, including local colleges and universities, we've simply been off the radar. We are now doing everything we possibly can to recruit them into our classrooms. This challenge has been compounded by substitute teacher staffing problems. We selected Source for Teachers in an attempt to resolve a longstanding challenge in the school district. Too few substitutes for many schools. While many schools have low fill rates this year undersourced for teachers, in reality, many schools, too many schools, always had low fill rates. That is why we sought an outside partner to help reverse this trend. We do not dispute that the current rates are extremely low and unacceptable. However, I do not want anyone to be under the misconception that we had extremely high rates in most schools prior to this year. An ideal rate is 85%. During the first half of last school year, roughly 60 schools fell into that category. Although the district-managed rates were better than what we have now, we would not consider those rates to be good. As I've stated from the start of this year, I'm deeply disappointed with the performance of our vendor and the disruption that it has caused to our students, teachers, and schools. There were clear missteps in Source for Teachers' initial recruiting tactics. I'm grateful to those teachers who have given up their prep periods to take on additional classes, and I understand the concerns of parents whose children have not had a permanent teacher all year. And I assure you that we're working diligently and urgently to address this issue, including planning for summer enrichment opportunities. While some have advocated canceling our contract with Source for Teachers and put substitute staffing back under district management, that would further compound our problems, putting schools with extremely low fill rates at risk of going even lower. Source for Teachers is improving, although slowly. Their pipeline now includes 590 teachers who are educators we would lose if we were to cancel the contract, since they are employees of the staffing firm, not the School District of Philadelphia. As we approach the 201617 school year, we're tripling our recruitment and placement efforts starting right now. Over 1,000 teachers have already started applications with us. We will be making early offers and over-hiring so that we have extra staff to handle late vacancies and absences for next school year. Every child deserves to have a teacher in front of them every day. We thank you for hosting this important conversation about our schools and their children. The city has stepped forward in support of our students and in advocating for sufficient investments in education here and throughout the Commonwealth. As always, we appreciate your hard work and dedication to our great city and our schools. I will be happy to answer questions once the panel has concluded.
Thank you very much. The chair notes that Councilman Squill is here, and obviously we have a quorum. Did we, I did not introduce? I did, I introduced it. No, thanks, thanks, thanks. Better to do it twice than not at all. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, and the City Council Education Committee for inviting me here to speak on our vision for building a world-class public education system in Philadelphia, and for presenting Resolution 160033. This resolution is important because it goes directly to the heart of what the PFT and our community allies are fighting for: High-quality public education for every child in Philadelphia. We support this resolution because it recognizes that all of our children, regardless of neighborhood, deserve a first-class education. It also takes into account the fact that many of our children are economically disadvantaged, and that poverty creates many significant barriers to academic success. It is our job as educators, parents, elected leaders, and community members to remove these barriers for our children. On February 18th, I testified on the status of Philadelphia's public schools and shared some distressing statistics about unacceptably high number of teacher vacancies and oversized classes in our schools. Missing at that time was data on our high schools, which we now have included and shared with the committee. In the interest of time, I won't repeat this information, except to point out that there are 367 oversized high school classes, including the 19 Philly high schools that have eight or more oversized classes. This is in addition to the 205 oversized classes in our elementary and middle schools. We also have included numbers related to Source for Teachers' failure to provide adequate substitutes. This information is courtesy of Newsworks reporter Kevin McCory, who obtained the data through a right-to-no request, a necessity since the district is rarely forthcoming, about Source for Teachers' dismal record. There are 60 schools where Source for Teachers has a meager fill rate of 10% or less, and another 26 schools where the rate is 5% or less. As I said the last time I was here, and many other times this school year, there is simply no excuse for having this many vacancies in our schools, nor is it excusable to pay Source for Teachers millions of dollars for their continued record of failure. Each day these vacancies exist further erodes the educational opportunities afforded to our children. If we are going to achieve the laudable goals outlined in the Education Committee's resolution, the district will have to do a much better job of fulfilling basic functions like making sure that there are enough adults in our school buildings to educate our children. One of the things I appreciate about this resolution is the notion that the community should be involved in decisions about our public schools. I would add that our educators should also play a large role in shaping the future of public education. But it is difficult for educators to have this kind of input when we are working for a district and a school reform commission that is determined to undermine, punish, and silence the voice of Philly's teachers and school staff. To be clear, our fiscal situation has made it difficult to provide students and educators with the resources they need to teach and learn, but many of our problems, including vacancies and substitutes, would have been much less severe if the district had reached out to the PFT instead of unilaterally making poor decisions that have led to our current staffing crises. Instead of treating the PFT as partners to create better schools, the district and the SRC have repeatedly disrespected educators by violating contract provisions, curtailing compensation for educators, and taking the disrespectful and outrageous step of attempting to cancel the PFT contract. The PFT has been a leading advocate for bringing the community schools model to Philadelphia. I have repeatedly stated that this is a better vision for our schools. With community schools, we can develop programs that not only educate our children, but provide additional wraparound services that address the academic, social, medical, and emotional challenges facing our children. In order to work, the community school model must incorporate input from all stakeholders, including educators. If this model is to be successful, the district must abandon its current practice of avoiding tough conversations with parents and educators in its decision-making. Resuming contract negotiations with the PFT would be an important first step in establishing a productive dialogue about the issues facing our schools. Negotiations are about more than getting a fair contract for PFT members. Contract talks are about both sides working together on solutions to the challenges we face. Unfortunately, the district abandoned this dialogue on October 6th of 2014. Despite our problems, this is a hopeful time for our schools. I can't remember a time when Philly's elected leaders, parents, and educators were this united about community schools and other ideas to make our schools better. I hope that the district and the SRC will soon embrace the idea of working collaboratively with Philadelphians to improve our schools rather than dictating to them. Thank you again for your time and for your commitment to our children's education.
Thank you very much. Let me note that there are questions that we submitted and answers to all my colleagues you'll see in your packets. And also let me note that this resolution was sponsored by not only myself, but Councilwoman Gimm Parker and Councilman Squilla, and sponsored by, in addition to us, Councilman Talbemberger, Green, O., O'Neal, Bass, Jones, Greenlee, Dom, Heenan, Johnson, and in addition to all of us. So again, we say thank you, and we're going to go right into questions. I'll hold mine, and mine have been submitted, and we have my answers here. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Councilwoman Blackwell as Chair of the Committee on Education for her leadership in organizing and hosting these hearings regarding the status of public schools in the city of Philadelphia. I want to start with the SRC in particular, and say welcome to each of you, and thank you for being here. Ms. Jimenez, talk to us about what you mentioned regarding the Supreme Court ruling. When we had the hearing earlier, that was a joint hearing between children and youth and education, one of my questions was, as a result of the ruling, one, have you been able to put a price tag on exactly what the ruling means purely from a positive economic analysis perspective on the district? And two, after you have analyzed the ruling, are there any other remaining mechanisms for controlling the cost of charters that the district can control? So that's two. And number three, if a specific legislative remedy or prescription is needed, you tell us what it is to ensure that the school district is able to organize and put together a budget as it relates to the court's ruling, and just saying that you've overstepped your boundaries?
So in response to your first question in terms of the price tag, that is one of the questions we've been exploring with the school district. As I understand, and our CFO is here, and maybe he can answer directly, we will need some more time to get to a final number. There are a number of considerations. One, of course, is there's, you've got to create some, a set of assumptions around the potential for charter school growth, the likelihood that those that have not signed contracts may choose to expand the number of seats. That's something that is, some analysis and some assumptions need to be developed for that, as well as the way that we look at the implications with respect to labor. Of course, I have a whole other set of assumptions. So I guess I can defer to Uri Monson to come at some point and offer up a more thorough response, if that's okay. But I'll answer the next two, and then...
Ms. Jimenez, let me go back. You mentioned a sort of making assumptions about charter school growth and analysis. Based on those charters that willingly entered into an agreement with the district, that we will cap our enrollment at this amount, right, so that the district could appropriately budget for them? And then, obviously, we had a group that decided it would not. Have we sort of made any kind of analysis that if the district, if a school, for example, had a 500-student population, but they agreed to enter into some sort of contract with you about their numbers, however, what they really wanted was 800? Have we done any analysis of that and/or the SRC's denial and/or acceptance? That's what I'm trying to see, if we have any numbers.
Good morning, Uri Monson, Chief Financial Officer for the district. We are looking exactly at that analysis, so there are two ways to look at it. One issue we're looking at is there are some charters currently that have, are above the cap, we just don't pay for them, they don't require, so we've been able to do analysis on that number. That's about $3.1 million annually. That would assume that all of them asked for the district to cover those costs, which they do not currently. The more difficult analysis we're trying to figure out assumptions are, is there may be some charters that have expressed an interest to go even beyond those numbers, but we still need to assess whether or not they actually currently have capacity, so how soon that might hit, and that's an ongoing discussion right now, an analysis.
Okay, so $3.1 million. Okay. And Ms. Jimenez, if we could just go back now, thank you.
So your second question with respect to what are the avenues available with respect to managing charter growth? At this point, we anticipate continuing to look to our high-performing charter schools, the ones, for example, that we have just granted the opportunity to create a new charter, a conversation and negotiation. So we're hoping that the ones that are at the highest level of performance are going to be willing to enter in... to be willing to enter into voluntary agreements. What we can't do is mandate that, but I think it's important to underscore that at no point have we ever held, we've not, we have entered into these discussions with our charters in a collegial way, and they have voluntarily agreed to sign these charter caps. In many ways, because the highest-performing charters understand what is the appropriate number of students for them to deliver high-quality levels of service, and so they understand what's the best size for them with respect to operating. So I anticipate that we're not going to find ourselves having as many challenges as what one would think going forward with the charters that we've at least more recently awarded. The bigger question is with the charters that have not signed contracts, as well as potentially with charters that are up for renewal who may choose not to enter into agreement. That's why it's kind of an unknown figure at this point, because we can only have negotiations and conversations and see if we can get to some set of agreement when they sign their charter agreement. With respect to the legislative fix, so the charter school law is the place where the legislators can make a fix if they'd like. It's a big question mark as to whether or not they have any inclination to do so. Obviously, before us, the bigger issue is really how do we address the budget needs of all of our districts in the Commonwealth? And probably second to that is whether or not they have any appetite to look at the charter school law. We would hope that they would be willing to revisit that, and I'll tell you that our charter school office has received very high marks from the National Association of Charter School Authorizers for the level of quality that they deliver in authorizing charter schools. They are viewed in this Commonwealth as one of the strongest models for how you would authorize and award new charter schools and how you'd evaluate them. It would seem a real shame to clip the ability of the authorizer to really insist on high-quality charters before we award a charter, to hold these charters to high academic standards, because that is one of the conditions that we're not, no longer, when we suspended, one of the conditions that we use for renewals is quality of educational outcomes. Now that is a question, whether or not we can use that as a standard in evaluating a charter for renewal and non-renewal. We would hope that our legislators would understand how important it is to support charter schools as a model for a high service, for a high model of how you deliver high-quality education, and therefore empower us to continue to provide high-quality authorizing practices, which include negotiating with our charters as to the size of their schools, as well as to hold them accountable to high academic outcomes.
So, the SRC is the chief advocating entity for the school district of Philadelphia, and if I am a member of the General Assembly, I want to know very specifically, if legislative fixes are needed, SRC as the chief advocating entity, what are the top three or four things that you would be specifically asking the General Assembly to do to help address, aside from the budgetary challenges, right? Because they're impacting us statewide, they're large, and we're advocating. But if you're making an ask of them very specifically, what does the ask entail?
Yeah. So one is, I would think it'd be very important for us to be able to continue to do what we did with suspend, when we suspended the rules, which is to enable us to establish geographic enrollment preferences for some of our charter schools, so that we can make sure that they're serving the students in those communities where there's the greatest level of need. The other would be for us to be able to hold our charter schools to high academic performance requirements, and to be able to deny renewal on that basis, and in extreme circumstances, to even revoke a charter license on the basis of whether or not they're providing high-quality academic options for our students. And then I think the third is really our ability to negotiate with our charters, what is the size of their schools, because I think it's really important for us to be able to manage charter growth as well. So those would be the top three.
Thank you. And Council Lady, I will come back in a second round, but one question I'll have for Dr. Height. Dr. Height, for those of us who were in Harrisburg during the cigarette tax debacle and remember the very dramatic process and long and enduring, I was surprised when I saw the article noting that the district would be ending the year with a surplus. I remember advocating for the cigarette tax, and the first number we used was that it was expected to generate $87 million annually, in which several people said, "No, that number, that projection is way too high." Talk to us, after all of the budget cuts that the school district has had to deal with over the past five years now in particular, how do we end up with the surplus?
Yeah, two things. And then what you were talking about, Councilwoman, is the surplus ending the last school year in the CAFER that we just made public. There were two things, and I'll have Uri come back up and talk about this, but one of the primary things was the forecast of, like, how the cigarette tax would come in. And the city had one projection, as you know, the legislature had a different projection. We tried to split it down the middle, which ended up coming in higher. That was number one. Number two was the tax collections here in Philadelphia, and there were two months where those collections were well under what was forecasted. And based on those two months, then we adjusted, the school district adjusted its projections, because if those things continued, we would be facing a larger deficit than what we first projected. And in the last two months of the last fiscal year, it not only caught up, but then exceeded the collections. And so we saw two months where collections were well below what was projected. And then in May and June, we saw those collections rebound and exceed the actual amount that was budgeted. And so, any other thing, Uri, that you want to add on that? Okay, great.
Thank you, Council Lady.
And, Councilwoman, if you, I'll just add that, and, May and June, as you know, end our fiscal year, so that works right into the next fiscal year. And by that time, as we were making projections, then it's almost too late to spend the money for that previous year based on when those monies come available. And so if the monies come available earlier, naturally you can spend them, but when they come available in May and June, that's much harder. And so then we had to readjust our projections again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gem, Councilman O., Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you so much, and good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Dr. Height, Mr. Jordan, Ms. Jimenez, and members of the audience. Thank you very much. So I had a number of different questions, just on two lines of thinking. The first is a little bit about what's happened to achievement in this school district and resources that have been distributed out to schools. So I think that the, I want to thank Mr. Jordan and the school district for providing us with helpful data, but, you know, we have significant concerns that the massive drop-off in teachers in particular has led to situations that we haven't seen in decades, if ever. That includes 184 teacher vacancies, 500 class sizes that are overcrowded across the city, and we're not just talking about, you know, small marginal or incremental increases in class size, we're talking about how Martin Luther King has 22 oversized classrooms ranging from 45 students in history and chemistry and up to 64 students in the health class. It also includes the fact that we're seeing massive drop-offs in our achievement rates. So percent reading at grade level, K to 2, went down from 52% in 2012-2013, down to 44% in FY 2015. PSA reading grades at proficient and advanced went from 45% in 2012-2013, according to district data, down to 33% last year. And for the advanced portion, almost was cut by more than half, 8% down to 3%. These are massive consequences. I don't think that they're just incidental or coincidental or anything like that. They're massive consequences to our young people, and especially about their experiences in schools. So can you talk to me a little bit about why, in this particular situation, what is the district actually doing right now? And can you explain the seeming commitment to Source for Teachers despite some pretty atrocious fill rates? I know that you said that fill rates could be lower, but Munoz-Marion has a 0% fill rate through this year, and 62 schools have a below 10% fill rate. But more significantly, I think that while those are low, there are schools that used to have 100% and 80% fill rates that don't see anywhere near those numbers either.
Sure. I'll try to take them in order, Councilwoman. So I'll begin with the, so I want to begin just with the data that you referenced at the beginning. And so, we can analyze those data, because I'm not quite sure where they came from, but...
Your office.
They did?
Yep. They were in response to the data request that we had from February.
Okay. So, because we have, we calculate class size averages, and I have, for high schools, 25. And so I don't have anywhere near the numbers that you just shared, and I know that, and our largest classes are, is a class of 49, and that's a PE class.
Okay. That data did come from PFT, for clarification.
Okay, okay. So we could analyze, I mean, so I would love to have an opportunity to go through that and just, and figure out the validation, because if my numbers are wrong, I want to make sure that...
You're saying that there are 25 overcrowded classrooms in the entire school district of Philadelphia?
No, no, no. Of high schools, of high schools. And so 25 oversized classes in high schools, and then I have by high school, the number of classes that are oversized. And when I, and when we say oversized, we're talking about class sizes over 39. And then we have one class...
Of 39?
39, yes, ma'am.
Did that become, when did that become a standard for overcrowding?
It's not, it's not. Because the averages, there are some classes that, so if the classes, you know, our class sizes are 33, and so a class of 34, if on average we have fewer than 33, and that's how we allot another teacher. But a 34 doesn't automatically trigger another teacher or another section, and so that's why it's based on averages.
Yes.
And so we do 39 for significantly overcrowded classrooms, and then we have one class that's over, that is 49, and that is a PE class. But I can, I would love to look at the numbers just to provide some clarification, if we can.
So, you know, just for clarity here, what would you say the average class size would be out in, say, a Lower Marion?
I don't know. I'm pretty sure it's probably in the mid to low twenties.
Right. And my sister, for example, would have a child who would go to a Lower Marion classroom, and at 20 is guaranteed kindergarten, and at 22, they'll put in a new teacher. So I think, it is very important that we have an understanding of what overcrowding is, because I think the district's use of 39 has not been commonly established, nor is it really acceptable. I mean, I really don't know anywhere here where that has become a new standard for us to determine what's considered an overcrowded classroom and what might trigger action by the school district. And the fact that we still have classes over that is a big concern.
And, nor am I suggesting that 39 is appropriate, an appropriate size. What I was just responding to was data that you presented, and I wanted to provide data from the school district. And so I do think that 33 is too large, and that is what we go on, on an average. But as I indicated earlier, you could walk into many different schools and see very small classes, and in some cases, see large classes. And so we just pulled a number, because we would think of significantly oversized class being one at 39, and that's what I asked for, what I asked for the data.
Is the school district calculating overcrowded class sizes over the contractual maximum of 33? Are you keeping track of that?
We do have those numbers. I don't have those with me today.
Okay. So, to me, it's important that this, the issue of overcrowding, especially being a former teacher myself, and having had young people complain significantly in meetings about not feeling that they have personal attention, not having access to resources, not feeling that when a teacher doesn't show up, that it's completely chaotic, that these are major issues that are going on, I just want to make sure that the district is aware that 39 is not a standard that we're aware of, and not something that we would want the district to be using, and that as it's continuing to talk about the issue of overcrowding, that it's our understanding that we consider the contractual maximum to be by the PFT regulations of 33 in, you know, grades four and up, and then 30 in K to 3.
That's correct. And I want to also add that, so a school could have one class of 34 children, all of the other classes could be 20 children, and it could be a time of day when there are no other options for the children, they can only have the class that time of day. That does present an issue as we, because at that school, we wouldn't think that we would have any classes that are oversized, because the vast majority of the averages are well below the 33 in each class. And so the point I'm making here is it's very nuanced based on how we count and how we allot teachers. And it's based on averages, not the absolute number, and as soon as that number hits a threshold, then we add another teacher. That's not how we distribute positions to schools.
Yep. So I just want to go back to, although, you know, for my personal purposes, I just, speaking for myself, really do feel that the district does need to take the contractual maximums as an outer limit, and not an average, and not a bare minimum. And it is still continuing to be alarming, but I don't want to get derailed by the conversation, because I still want to go back to the central issue about how these resources are fundamentally impacting young people's experiences in schools, and it's actually affecting our achievement rates as well in a very clear and significant way, and is going right at the heart of Action Plan 3.0, which is to get every eight-year-old on grade level, and that is clearly, by this data, not happening.
Yeah. And so thank you for bringing that point up as well, because to your point, I do think that naturally achievement has been impacted by reductions in resources over the past several years. I will also add that 2012 was a year of, well, it was, that's, those data in the 2012 year were the data that were also reviewed for PSSA and the cheating scandal, and so all of that information, all of the work that went around, the investigations associated with that, happened during that time. So from that time forward, I think it was, it's a more realistic analysis of the performance of students. The other thing I will add is that last year's assessment, last year's PSSA assessment was the first of a very different assessment. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison with previous year assessments. Was our data where it should be, or am I satisfied? Absolutely not. But as compared to all of the other districts across the Commonwealth who also saw declines, our declines were not as significant as the state in general. But I will add, I don't want to miss the point, because I think the point here is right, that when you have to make decisions and choices about resources, and those resources are removed from schools, and there are schools where we haven't had new textbook adoptions, new, or the ability to have instructional materials, or there are multiple individuals in schools who can tutor or coach children, particularly around literacy and in math, that does have an impact on achievement, and we've seen that impact almost at the same, almost year for year, year to year, or year for year, with the budget reductions. And so, does it have an impact? It absolutely has an impact on our ability, and during that same period of time, we've seen class sizes increase, we've seen limitations in what children have in terms of their instructional materials, we've seen reductions in what teachers have in terms of their materials and supplies as well. All of those things have impacts. And we've seen the removal or the discontinuance of credit recovery programs, summer programs, after-school programs, all of those things help build towards literacy. And with... And we're starting to return those things to schools in, as a part of the investments moving forward. But those things have had an impact on, on achievement.
So my next line of questioning has a little bit to do around the, the struggle for resources, especially for this long-time starvation of district-managed public schools. And so, you know, one of the questions has been the massive expansion within our charter school entity. And that it's my understanding that charter school growth is the fastest-growing sector. Is that right? It's outstripping pensions at this point? That increases in charter growth expenses are now greater than growth in, as a percentage for pensions? Is that accurate?
Is that right?
Or are they close? It's one and two?
Yeah. I think, I think, I think pensions, I think pensions are still the-
As a percentage of growth.
As a percentage of growth. Growth, I think pensions are still by far the, the figure that, that grows pretty significantly. But there has been growth in the charter school sector in terms of expenditures.
So this is obviously, and in particular, this is an area where the districts, this is the district's signature initiative, I think I heard that from Ms. Jimenez. Could you clarify for me, how many district public schools have closed in the last five years? Have been closed by the last five years, including the last round involving Bieber and others by the SRC?
Thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-two.
Thirty-three?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two? And then how many charter schools have been closed and successfully closed by the SRC?
Eight. Eight have been closed.
Eight have been closed?
Eight.
Okay. And that they have actually closed? They aren't in limbo? Okay.
Yes. Yes, they've been closed.
There is clearly a question about, the question about cultivating a quality school environment and that we have limited expansions and opportunities to do that within the charter atmosphere. But, you know, I guess I have a lot of questions, a little bit about this idea that we're cultivating a quality charter community and that we have the ability in which to enact that. And in part, I think it's, it's due to some interesting changes around the Renaissance program in particular. I think the Renaissance program is the fastest-growing sector of charter school growth, right? We're not approving, we only just recently approved new charters. The last five years, Renaissance charters have shot through the roof and the largest charter operators are now Renaissance charter operator, a Renaissance charter operator that wasn't active in the district until that program opened. Isn't that right? But I think the, the question is, is that there, there was a comment made by the charter school operator in particular about new Renaissance charters that were being brought in. And one of them was said by your charter school chief that one of the areas for Philadelphia to think about is, and I'm quoting from her, is how we generate interest among those who have not, who have been more regionally focused. And the question becomes a possibility of gauging, engaging operators who are not traditionally involved in turnaround, but who have turnaround competencies. And I guess my question here is, is that I need clarification about, from the school district, about whether it sees itself as a charter recruiter and a charter builder as opposed to being a charter authorizer.
Yeah. I want to add some, so we have 15,000 children roughly in Renaissance schools. And I think it's another 50,000 that are in charters. And so it's not, I think we, we did recommend Renaissance this year. Last year, there was not a recommendation for Renaissance, nor was it the prior year. So it's not, it's not the fastest-growing. And to the, to the point, what we do are, we, we, inside of our system of grade schools, we look at several factors. And we look at factors to include many different things. I mean, and so those factors are things like the performance of the school, whether or not, we look at the leadership of the school. We also look at the utilization of the building. We look at achievement of the students. We look at growth. We look at enrollment and enrollment trends. We look at the number of parents who choose the school that live in the boundary and the staff turnover. And then from that, we make a set of recommendations. And some of those recommendations could be in-district turnaround schools. Some of those could be the expansion of other well-performing district schools. And then for some, it is a recommendation for Renaissance. It's not, it's not to recruit other providers, but it is to look for individuals who work with those types of similar populations that are doing good work. And so part of it is a determination about what we are trying to do with those schools and then what we map, then we do the match based on who we think will provide the most urgent infusion of quality at the school. And in some cases, we look at charter providers who've done this work in other places with similar populations. And then therefore, we would ask those individuals to come and make application or respond to a request for proposals.
But you invited charter operators who had no experience in turnaround and didn't have experience in the grade population for which they applied for a particular school.
Well, we've invited charter operators who also had, who had similar populations in urban areas like ours. And it may not have necessarily been in turnaround, but they were similar populations to populations like the children that we serve in the schools that were recommended for Renaissance.
And so I guess my last question on this line and then I'll, I'll have a second go around later. Why choose, you know, charter schools are estimated to cost between $4,500 for Renaissance and $7,500 for regular charter schools in stranded per pupil cost to the district. Why has the district at this, given the dramatic costs that have been incurred or borne by district-managed public schools, the starvation of resources, why has the district consciously chosen a path that is not financially sustainable and has not instead pursued in-district turnaround?
We actually are pursuing in-district turnaround and we're going to make that-
At the level that the charter schools, for example, why is in-district turnaround not considered an option for the 15,000 children who are in the Renaissance charters?
Well, I think, I can't speak to the decisions that were made before I arrived, but I think part of those recommendations were consistent with recommendations also for Promise Academies, for some of the schools that were recommended, like Martin Luther King, for instance, was a Promise Academy school at the same time that schools were handed over to Renaissance. In addition to charters, excuse me. In addition, what we're trying to do now is look at a group of schools. And I was talking about essentially 5,000 seats, if you will. And those 5,000 seats were a mix, a mixture of Renaissance schools. There were three recommendations that, that amended to two. And then there were, there are in-district turnarounds. That is going to be a part of a recommendation that we have for new investments. And then others were the expansion of other district-run, high-quality schools. And then there was a partnership with a, for a nonprofit provider that would operate a district school. And so it was, it wasn't just charter providers, but it was looking at, it was looking at a population of children that need something urgent and different and making recommendations that we felt were the best recommendations for, for that group of children. A lot of attention naturally was on the matches for the charters and Renaissance, but that wasn't the sole recommendation. We also made other recommendations for other schools. And so my point here is that Renaissance, although a strategy, is not the strategy. We also take other measures. And so for instance, we made investments in 40 literacy coaches that went into many of our, many of our lowest-performing schools. Next year, we're talking about investments that will include nurses in every schools and counselors in every schools. I mean, so those are additional investments that we would want, that we would want to make. But those, we've also made investments in other places like expanding schools like SLA or opening three new schools or school redesign that this year focused on Tilden, Chester Arthur, Conwell, and there was one other school that, that I'm talking about.
Yeah. I'll let my other colleagues go ahead, but I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm not sure that literacy coaches are considered a turnaround plan. And I guess it's been five years since we've had budget cuts that have come through the Corbett era and we're still waiting for a significant approach towards in-district turnaround from the district that I have and am still struggling to hear because some of the things that we're talking about are basic resources in schools. We have a turnaround chief that was hired in August. We're still waiting to hear for a plan and it's been a real struggle because it only seems that the answers that come out of the district are to go charter, close schools, and ad hoc things when we can scramble together the money to find it.
No, I appreciate the point and, but I will say that it is simply not accurate. I mean, and the, the point is that Renaissance is not our only mechanism for addressing schools. We have hired a turnaround chief. You're right. We're going to make a recommendation for turnaround later this week, as a matter of fact, for turnaround schools with a turnaround model. And we had to construct that. But just as the budget cuts have impacted schools, they've also impacted the district and what we were able to take on. And trying to take on all of these approaches with limited staff then become, it does become a challenge. And I, I didn't use, I didn't suggest that literacy coaches were turnaround strategies. My point was that literacy coaches are an investment and they're investment in some of our lowest-performing schools. And I will also add that 80% of what we spend is spent on all schools, not on just, and then 20% of what we do is spent on those schools that need a more urgent infusion of quality. And that's, so those are the types of things like turnaround that we would use in those cases.
Thank you very much.
And if I could just add too, I just wanted to underscore, Councilwoman Gim had mentioned that potentially that Renaissance was the fastest-growing sector of charter growth. We have about a little over 80 charter schools in Philadelphia. 20 of them are Renaissance charters and the balance are standalone charter schools. And I think it's also important to, to note that while we may not frame it in this way, at the same time that we have been seeing some, some schools renaissanceed, we've also had the district build new schools as well as offer up an opportunity to the larger community to redesign schools. So there have been other strategies in addition to Renaissance that have been employed over the last couple of years.
I think my question was about scale. That those things have been done at a much smaller scale.
And I think it'd be appropriate for us to respond with the scale because I think you will find that they are not disproportionately matched.
Thank you. And let me note that it looks as if Councilman Squillaw is the only non-teacher.
Wow, Councilwoman.
No, but you're, you're still, you still talk-
Karate counts.
Yeah. He, he taught karate. That's good enough for me. And certainly, Councilwoman Sanchez was a founder and principal. And Councilwoman Parker and myself were high school English teachers. Blondie was a high school teacher.
Fifth grade.
And Councilwoman Gim was a fifth-grade teacher. So you all are in serious trouble because we've all been there. Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. So I have general questions, but let me start with this for anybody watching. You are here as a courtesy because you are not a department, the, the School District of Philadelphia, the SRC, the Superintendent of Schools is not a department, is not answer to the Mayor of Philadelphia or the City Council of Philadelphia. It is a separate body of government, self-governing, and therefore, all the details and the intentions and the plans, the finances are completely on your side. I appreciate you being here. So many times, people ask us, many of us, why don't you write a law? Why don't you do this? And I just tell them, we don't run the schools. They may come to us and answer questions for the public and we do work together in some ways, hopefully in good ways. But ultimately, people get confused in this setting because it looks like you're answering our questions because you have to. You really don't, but I appreciate your being here. That having said, you know, I don't know the answer to these questions. My first question is, how much money do you need to bring the school district to the level that you want and over what period of time do you need that money?
Well, that's what we're working on now in order to bring you that figure. And remember, last year's figure, when we produced the books from every district and with every school and the requests that were made by schools, it was an additional $400 million.
Okay. So that's not, not my question. That is how much you need on a year-to-year-to-year-to-year basis.
No, that was last year.
That was last year?
Yes.
My question is, what number is associated to the plan that the SRC has given to Harrisburg, to the governor, to the senate, to the house, that includes a reform, best practice of the management and quality of education, along with the amount of money needed on a yearly basis over eight, 10, five years, whatever it is? What amount of money do you need from Harrisburg?
Let, Councilman, the reason I'm struggling with the question is last year, I mean, to Councilwoman Gim's point, we've been working the opposite way. So we've been-
Yes.
-working from a standpoint of reducing our budgets because revenue were, I mean, was reduced from Harrisburg. But last year, we made a request to, to the state and I believe that request was around $200 million because we had 100, and we, we had that for the city.
Right. So the reason I'm bringing up this question, as I did last year and the year before that, is city council and the mayor does not know what your plan is. We don't know what your number is. We couldn't make it up for you if we wanted to. The SRC has that responsibility over the last 15 years. And rather than coming here year after year for 200, 400, 100 million dollars, I would like to know, what did you go to Harrisburg with and say, listen, the SRC has a reform plan. Here it is in writing. Here's best practices. Here's quality education. Here's equity in schools. Here is how many years it takes. Here's how much money we need. We may not get that money, but here's how much money we need to get there so that you know that this is what you need to do for the schools of Philadelphia. Because if you're not doing that, then nobody's doing that.
Yes, sir. Yes. And so, thank you. Thank you for the-
Thank you.
The clarification. So it is, last year, that number was north of $800 million. And we did go and say, here are the, here are the amounts of money that we would need. Naturally, we didn't ask for that. But in, in order to put the plan that we, that you described and that we described as the state and last year at council into play with all of the investments that I've been talking about, that was about an $800 million over a period of time. $800 million in a five-year type of plan.
In five years, will the SRC be dissolved if you get that money?
So, so for, for the SRC, it's a matter of can we get to a label, a level of fiscal stability? And at that point, I think it's a question that the commissioners will turn to each other and ask. I just do want to say that this is not a question that goes unsaid amongst us. We do ask ourselves, when is the appropriate time and when are we going to get to that level of fiscal stability? It was not a commission that was meant to be in perpetuity and I don't think any of us feel that it should persist in perpetuity. But we do feel that we have work that we need to get done and we want to get it done as quickly as possible so that we can return this to local control.
Okay. I do appreciate that, you know, because, you know, here's my confusion. If you are, if you are presenting a plan to Harrisburg that is like a five-year plan, $800 million, I haven't seen it. I'd like to see it. The other thing is, to my knowledge, there has not been written in, in conjunction with that plan, a charter change unless you don't need a charter change, unless the, the current board- board, as it is laid out in the charter, which was never put into effect, that the new Board of Education was, was created after the SRC takeover. So if you are fine with that Board of Education, then please let me know.
Well, no, we're, we're agnostic on what process it takes. We just know that what would happen is if the SRC votes to dissolve itself, or the legislature chooses to dissolve the SRC, it would go back to local control, mayoral appointment. And at that point, it really is up to this body and I guess the administration to make a determination as to what they think would be the appropriate design, governance design for the school district.
Okay, so I'm just saying that this committee, though it has no authority over the school district, principals, teachers, counselors, or anything, we did do hearings over a number of years of best practice in America and overseas. And based on that, I did write a charter change, which I have kind of distributed. If you haven't gotten, I'll certainly send it to you. I'm not saying you're going to like it. I'm not saying it's the best thing out there. All I'm saying is, I think it's the only thing out there, unless you like, you know, the current situation, which is fine. But I'm presenting a charter change on the governance structure of the SRC or the Board of Education and the administration of the, of the management of the schools to Harrisburg as a way to see if they will approve local control and the transitional funding. So I will give you my plan in writing. I would like to get your plan in writing so that I can see what you have been doing up in Harrisburg. And can you tell me, how is your plan received by the senate, the house, the governor at this point in time?
Well, at this point in time, we still don't have a full budget for this year, so the...
I mean, your overall plan, your long-term plan.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I mean, so, so, so people who are in support of what we're trying to do overall, in, in terms of our plan. In addition, I'll be glad, Councilman O, to provide you with another copy. We did provide all council persons last year with the, what the plan was, and then what that looked like at all of their, the schools within their district. And for the at-large members that were schools, it was just the plan. And so we, we could also provide, that was part of our budget document last year.
I didn't see that. I didn't, I didn't understand that to be a plan. I understand that to be basically kind of a state of current affairs and what a wish list, if we could...
No, it was, it was our plan because it talked about school turnaround, it talked about literacy, it talked about college and career readiness. It, that was, that was our plan, and then it was, the budget was in response to what we were trying to accomplish.
Okay, so, so what you presented last year with all the things that you want to do, including all those things?
Yes.
Is related to a dollar request in Harrisburg?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And, and at council, at city council.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Can you, as a, as a body, do you have, do you have a, a, what is your, what is, how do you do charter schools? I'm neither, you know, I think charter schools are fine. I like neighborhood schools, I like magnet schools, I like charter schools, whatever, but I don't understand your process. So here's what I think, and you could correct me because I don't want to just go on forever. The experts in education are the superintendent and his administration, his staff. And the approval of charter applications is done by the SRC. The SRC consists of political appointees who are not necessarily experts in education, but provide the oversight. The superintendent and, and the SRC, or the SRC makes the approvals. What is, what is the strategy around approving or revoking charters?
So the SRC has a charter schools office, and the charter schools office is comprised of educators and individuals who also have experience as authorizers of charter schools. And we're in really strong and competent hands with our executive director, Don Lynn Kaser, who came from New York and has a really strong background in charter school authorizing. The quality and the approach taken by our charter school follows best practices espoused by the National Association of Charter School Authorizers. So there's a certain way in which they argue that good authorizers conduct their evaluation of a charter school application, assess the competency and quality of a charter school when they're considering renewal and non-renewals or revocation. And all those practices are very well abided by, by our charter schools office, such that they received 13 out of 14 positive scores in terms of how they conduct themselves with respect to authorizing. Then those, the charter school office provides a set of recommendations after they've evaluated all of the applications from a quality perspective. At the same time, all of our applicants also receive a legal review that is, conducts an assessment based on the legal standard under the charter school law, which creates the conditions upon which one can and cannot grant a charter. And all of that information is provided publicly through a very well-studied process, and it's quite public, and lots and lots of hours of public testimony, thousands of pages of public comment, and many hearings. All that information is compiled and presented to the SRC, and we go through a very thorough review of each of the applications with the recommendations made by the charter school office based on quality and the lawyer based on legal standards. I think it's really important to underscore that the one condition that we are not allowed to take into consideration, which is the thorniest condition, is the financial condition of the district. That is precluded by the charter school law. We are not allowed to take that into consideration. So often, when people get really upset with us because they'd like us to take that into consideration, I wholeheartedly understand that. Unfortunately, the law does not allow us to do that. So we do, based on the process, on the analysis provided by our charter schools office and our, our legal counsel.
Okay. Based on that, I do have a question. I just want to say, I'm not qualified, and certainly I'm not saying it was a good or a bad decision, and I have no ability to say that. I, I just would like to, to take what you said and put it within this context for whatever comment you could, could make to, you know, to educate me and enlighten me. There are, there are poorly performing public schools that have been so poorly performing for such a long time with so little resources that the parents flock to the charter schools as an alternative to those public schools. The public schools, that, this reformation of public education is primarily about getting those neighborhood schools up to standard with, you know, schools that parents would want to send their kids in every neighborhood, then we wouldn't have this issue about charter schools. But we had an incident, not an incident, but, but, you know, a situation a couple weeks ago where Dr. Hyatt recommended against the charter school, the SRC went with the charter school. I'm not saying that's good or bad, I have really no knowledge of that. But in comparison to, like, especially in light of Supreme Court decision, what is the issue with simply allowing proven charter schools, like Mast Charter School, to expand versus approving new, untested, I'll call it untested, I may be wrong, charters? Because the more charters you approve and they're uncapped, you're going to have a lot more increase in, in the number of, of students that go to all those different charter schools. In other words, I would think that the judicious approval or disapproval and revocation of charters is a way to ensure that charters, you know, are, that's your financial control and your quality control. So could you put that within the context of what happened at the last SRC meeting?
So, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if you're referring to the Renaissance vote or to the charter school approval process because Mast was, I believe, an applicant for the charter school approval, not for a Renaissance.
No, I was, I was talking about...
Mastery, maybe?
Was it, was it?
Mastery, you're probably talking about mastery, okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, I had to recuse myself from the discussion from that.
Right, okay.
What, I, I don't know if I can really speak to ultimately the exercise that happened there.
If you can, that's fine, I don't want you to make up something, you know, I mean, can Dr. Hyatt, can you talk about that?
Sure.
I, I know you were, you, you were, had a conflict and recused yourself from that. I'm not saying about the quality of the decision, but what is the, what is the strategy?
So the, the strategy was that, back to the response to Councilwoman Gim's questions, the, we, we made a series of recommendations, and those recommendations were based on moving 5,000 children into higher-quality schools or seats. And three were Renaissance recommendations, there were two others that were consolidation decisions, that is, Hill Friedman moving to a larger building and taking in children who are currently at the lead school, and then the phase out of Bieber Middle School. And, and, and so, and then opening a, a partner-run high school with a partner nonprofit called Big Picture. And so those were all of the recommendations. And so the recommendations for Renaissance were based on a series of things, and I talked about those things earlier. It was based on the, the growth, the, the evidence of growth at the schools over a period of time. And we had roughly two years of growth, and we were looking at the growth of those schools, also the achievement at the schools, as well as climate at the school, and then some other factors.
Could I specify?
Sure.
Let me get a little more specific. You recommended...
So, so based on that, I made a recommendation of three schools, and those schools were Cook, Huey, Worcester. And then subsequent to that, toward the end of that process, the data were released for last year's performance, and that's the PSSA data and the PVAAS data, which, not PVAAS, but the growth data from the, from the state. Those data suggest, suggested that Worcester was a school that had showed strong evidence of growth. And so based on that growth that Worcester experienced, then I changed the recommendation to just include Cook and Huey because I felt there were other candidates that were, that were better for that level of investment for Worcester, I mean, than Worcester. And so I made the recommendation to the SRC, and I withdrew one of the schools from that recommendation. And then there was a motion at the meeting to...
Right, and I'm going to skip over that.
To continue, continue that process.
I want to get into the quality of your decision. My, my question is, so the SRC has the authority and makes the ultimate decision, and it made a decision, but that is not within the, of, for example, the, the finances of the school district? In other words, when you, when you do the approval of the, a new charter school, that charter school, like all the other charter schools, then establishes itself, and up until the Supreme Court decision, you try to limit how many students per charter school. But with so many charter schools now uncapped, each time you approve a new charter school, they potentially can increase hundreds of new students or so, right? They could just kind of expand, and wouldn't that kind of, instead of capping the students, kind of looking at the quality of schools, would that be a way to deal with the, the predictability or stability of the financial situation of the school district? And is that a strategy at all? Do you have any goals, or do you keep any understanding of the, I'm, I'm assuming you do, but would you explain what that is?
Can I just, can I just offer one, I think, really important point with respect to the, the decision that was had by the SRC with respect to the Renaissance charters, the recent vote? What the, what the SRC did was take a vote to accept applications...
Not approve it.
To not approve. So the qualitative exercise has not yet happened. And so we are receiving comments, I know Councilwoman Gim has given us a helpful analysis as well, but we are going to have a process that will be more qualitative in nature that has not yet occurred. So I think it's really important for people to understand that.
Yes, thank you for making that clarification. I know a lot of people confused over that. It was to accept the application, it wasn't approval or anything like that, it's just kind of a, of the process, right? Okay. So, but, but is there a mechanism to look at if you, if it is approved, and, and not for that reason, but just the, the, the increasing quantity of charter schools that are uncapped increases the number of charter students that then reduce the students in public school?
Yes, we actually take that into consideration when we make any recommendations, and we take that into consideration based on what the future investments will be, how it will impact our five-year financial plan. And so we try to, we, we try to control for that now with, with the, with the idea or prospect that we can no longer control caps, that does present a challenge for us in not having the predictability for costs associated with charters. And so that does limit some of our ability to control costs, but right now, we try to do that through agreements with the current charters, and we'll continue to work with them through the renewal process.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to stop asking questions because I know I'm taking up so much time. I do have a question for, for Jerry Jordan. There have been public schools that parents have complained about for, it seems like decades. They don't like the quality of education, there isn't good resources, there seems to be, you know, just such difficulty in getting any improvement in those schools. They were public schools. Are you, are you opposed to those schools becoming or having charter competition? Are you just opposed to any charter alternative to poorly performing public schools?
Councilman, I'm an advocate for making sure that our neighborhood public schools have the resources that they need in order to provide the quality of, the quality education that children deserve to have. And absent of the resources needed, it's very difficult to really label a school as a total failure when resources are pulled away. Children need to have the number of adults in schools in order to assist them. One of the reasons why we have been advocating for community schools is that those wraparound services that are badly needed in our schools for children will be provided. So I think that the way that you've asked your question just assumes that one accepts the lack of resources. And I would argue, because I've been in Philadelphia all my life, that, and I'm a product of the Philadelphia Public Schools, that given the appropriate resources at each school, many of the issues that you just suggested would disappear.
Do you support universal pre-K, community schools, bifurcation of real estate taxes, and the Parks and Recreation bond issuance, along with money for the school district this year? Do you, as PFT president, do you support all those wraparound school, universal pre-K, Parks and Rec, bifurcation of taxes? That's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, but, yes.
So you support them all?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sanchez.
I'm sorry, if it'd be okay, I just wanted to do a little quick clarification for Councilman O's comment, because Dr. Hyatt was very clear that when it comes to, we can, we have fiscal consideration when we're talking about Renaissance. That is because it sits outside the charter school application process, it's a very different process. So I want to underscore because I don't want people to be confused... So, I want to underscore, because I don't want people to be confused, in those situations with Renaissance, we can take in, into consideration the fiscal condition of the district. When it comes to charter school applications, we may not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and I'm gonna try not to take as much time as my colleagues, because I'm gonna get cut off now, as we always do when we're last, but I think it's an important conversation. You know, we've gotten to the place where we have discussed a different portfolio of schools, you know, charter schools, Renaissance, and others. The last time you were here, Dr. Height, I asked you a question, um, that you weren't really sure about, but I think it's an appropriate, uh, question for us to consider, particularly as we prepare for the budget cycles. Is the goal of Renaissance schools to return those schools to the district? Because I think one of the challenges we have here is with all these different portfolios and models is, um, it's not just about pushing schools out of your portfolio, but having accountability for best practices within those schools. Is that the goal of Renaissance schools?
That is, that is not a stated goal, uh, Councilwoman, that's not a stated goal, but the goal instead is to provide for children in city schools, uh, a better educational option. And for some, in some cases, Renaissance provides that. But we don't have, um, a five-year period and then at the conclusion of that five-year period, then we have a renewal conversation, we hold them accountable, we have, um, we have bought some Renaissance schools back and made recommendations that they come back to the district, um, but by the same token, it's not a stated goal that those schools would be returned to the district at the moment.
I think it's important that we get to a place where we get some clarity around what the portfolios look like and what they cost, because we make choices every day. I mean, one of the terms that we haven't used this morning has been, you know, the, the term that we often use around student-weighted formula and about kids, um, and, and what they need. And I think the community schools discussion becomes an important one, because I think it's an opportunity for us to, to, to re-address that, because community schools is supposed to be about the children, receiving their services, um, and the support, uh, mechanism. But in order to kind of have that conversation, I think it's important that we're at a stage where we really go back historically and look at the funding challenges related to charter schools. And I say this as someone who founded a charter school, and I think part of the problem is our funding formula, both locally and at the state level, but I think people need to understand the cost or the investments, some people would say, that we have chosen to make throughout the city, because not all things are equal-
Right.
-in all parts of the city. And that's why we, you know, we tactfully talk about student-weighted formula as a way to getting around, you know, which kids are getting what services and which kids have what options. Um, so I think it's important that when you come before us for the budget, that we really talk about those portfolios and we talk about the historical context. Where are the charter school slots at? Is there a correlation between those charter slots and the lack of investment on the public side? Because, you know, as I mentioned to you last time, I have a real challenge with accepting a comparison in a Renaissance school to a traditional school when the Renaissance is getting $4,000 extra. Like, you know, that is not fair. And, and I'm, I'm growing more and more frustrated about us identifying low-performing schools and really kind of telling our kids they're failing because we're failing them. And, and I think we need to figure this out. Um, so, you know, as we look at this portfolio that you've identified, whether it's these turnaround schools that have pluses and minuses to them, not all have been as successful as we wanted them to be, and I think we need to own them earlier rather than later, um, because we already see some of the challenges with it. Uh, we've seen that happen with the Renaissance, um, and I think we need to, like, identify what have been the challenges with those Renaissance. And if, if, if that is going to continue to be part of your portfolio, what is the cost? And, and at what sacrifice do we make that for the nearby schools when we do, when we make the choice to Renaissance a school? And I really want an articulated goal, is are we looking to bring these schools back? Because if it's gonna remain part of your portfolio, it, there should be a goal other than they're forever going to be this, um, to, to use the analogy of Puerto Rico, related, associated with, but not part of, kind of thing. Uh, some of us call it colonial, um, and that's kind of the, the kind of environment that we're creating in our schools. It's sort of like, you're part of us, but you're really not part of us. We'll give you a little bit more money, but we'll starve the other schools. So, I think we need to get to that point. And then, I think the, the issue of the Promise Academies, um, that were designated but didn't get their money because of the budget pieces, you know, what are we going to do with that portfolio? And so, that, when we make choices, we need to be real clear about where we're geographically providing these choices, um, and how much investments we're making, uh, at the cost of the other children when we do that. So that if the goal is, which I believe it should be, that we're providing, um, a good education in every single neighborhood, how is that reflected in your choices?
Right.
And so that, as a council, we can weigh your future choices around charters, Renaissance, turnaround schools, based on that. So, how, where are we today? Because some of us will say that, um, there's not an equal distribution of investments, uh, and then, moving forward, we can better monitor those choices. We know enough now. And, you know, in all fairness, I know that the charter reimbursement, uh, situation created a deeper hole. Let's identify that and say, you know, 175 million in one shot, when, you know, did, you know, hurt us. But then what are we doing moving forward as we make those decisions around what those stranded costs are? So, I don't need the answer today, but I do think as part of your presentation and your articulation of what the future goals are as your 3.0, those need to be addressed.
Sure.
Um, Councilwoman, that was a very, very helpful overview of the way that I think, uh, the SRC and the school district would very much like to work collaboratively in problem-solving with city councils. So, I thank you so much for, for that. Um, I also want to offer that, um, you had said we make, uh, choices, and indeed, we make choices and our parents also make choices. And I think one of the deep concerns that I have is that often, some of the choices that our parents make is that they don't believe or have confidence in the quality of our district schools, and they'll, um, often opt for a charter school or moving out of the city and taking their tax dollars with them, and therefore, I think, further compromising our ability to provide quality education for our students because of lack of resources. So, I think we are ever mindful of the fact that our parents are making choices. One of the things that is important to the SRC and I know to the school district is to ensure that our parents have very strong and informed voices, so that they hold us accountable. And, um, one of the exercises that we're, um, engaging in, um, this month is to facilitate the expansion of the number of parents who are engaged in our schools through whatever option they choose to be engaged, a school advisory council, a home and school association, um, any other, um, iteration that they think would be of value to them, so that they're, uh, informed and engaged and collaborating with our schools. So, we have our Strategy Policy and Priorities meeting on Wednesday at 5:30 at, um, at the school district, and we really encourage you to reach out to your constituents and ask them and invite them to come and be involved in this conversation, which I think is incredibly important, as we're thinking about not just our choices, but the choices our parents are being forced to make.
I, I think one of our challenges with the parent engagement is the issue of trust. You know, they don't trust anybody. Um, and for me, it's really difficult to be an advocate for public education, um, and not be able to articulate what our goals are, what our mutual goals are. We, we have not been on the same page about that for a long time, partly because of the financial issues that we use as an excuse to articulate what our goals are. Um, and I think we need to move to a place where, whether we agree or not, that we agree on what those goals, those overarching goals are. And I think that, um, part of what we were looking from a council perspective and that intergovernmental, um, role was to get to that place. You know, what is going to be the portfolios, what do they look like, and when we make choices, that we're very transparent about them. And I don't think we've gotten there, and I don't know how to build trust. I don't know what to say to a parent to convince them to get engaged in their schools, because every day, we're labeling them something different, um, and, and our messaging is, you know, is one of, it, there's inconsistencies. You know, everybody wants to say we want to be transparent and hold everybody accountable. What does that mean? Really, what does it mean? You know, I know that we are in a transparent body, um, because of the Sunshine Law that then the, the, the state legislature imposed on us, that they don't follow. So, I don't know what it all means, but what I do know is that we are at a different place now, because, um, we now have some common ground around what does, you know, whether it's the, uh, Mayor Kenny's, around community schools and pre-K and, and some other things. We're going in one direction. What does what we've done in the past, um, do to contribute so that we don't go down the same path? We can't keep changing models every four years. We can't, the kids don't deserve that. We keep doing that every time the personalities change. We have to commit to a model, allow 12 years for it to work, um, provide whatever systems of supports we need, and then acknowledge where we're, we're not going to be able to do everything. Um, and, and be, and then try to develop some faith around it, but, you know, having lived through correction action, one, two, and three, empowerment school, one, two, and three, Promise Academies, Renaissance, I mean, it's like, it's getting frustrating. And as a parent, um, I don't know what to tell a parent to make them believe.
So, if I may, um, Madam Chair, so, Councilwoman, I just wanted to add a piece, because I agree with you in terms of, like, the problem with talking about models is it creates all kind of confusion, um, and, and it leads to the mistrust that you described, and quite frankly, people have heard it before, right? So, the, the one thing that I've, the one thing that we're talking from now is we also have more information about our schools. Um, and now, we're able to map, put them all on a map, um, and all, by all, I mean, all district and almost over 90% of all charters. Um, and then, and on that map, it actually shows, um, four tiers. It's the bottom tier, the next tier, the third tier, and the top tier. Um, and 80% of all of those schools, whether they're district-run or charter, has fallen to the lowest two tiers. And it means that we have to do a lot of work, um, to address that. But one of the things that we are attempting to do is, instead of looking school up, um, we have to look community down. And there, if you look at that map of all of those schools, you will see geographical areas where, regardless of if it's a charter or district, inside of that, inside of certain areas, they're all red. And what we are trying to do is transform those from red and orange to green and blue, and that's the, that's the work that's happening. Models are just a part of that, but what we're attempting to do is begin to improve all schools. And we can map all kinds of things a, a, against it and on that map. We could look at, uh, places of worship, we could look at businesses, we could look at agencies, um, and all other support services. Um, and so, I think now we have more information, we can really begin talking about, uh, neighborhoods that have historically been very, uh, underrepresented in terms of access to opportunity, investments, um, and then begin to really see that, um, and see that not from the district's perspective, but also from the charter.
Well, I look forward to that discussion as part of the budget, because I really think that your budget should reflect your priorities, but we absolutely need clarity on these models and these portfolios in a way that when, when you're making a decision, it should be clear and transparent to me. It's not. So, it's, it's hard to explain that to the parents and get them to have faith that we're making, you know, decisions, um, without sacrificing children in, in the process. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, and we're going to ask, uh, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if after Councilman Squilla, we can agree to submit questions directly or to the chair, and if they're submitted to you, if you would respond so that we can distribute the information to all members. Uh, certainly, uh, we have one, two, three, four, four more panels. Uh, the fifth one was written testimony submitted by Deborah Diamond, Campus Philly. But after this, um, after Councilman Squilla, I hope the committee will agree to let the, we have State Representative Robach and other people, we, we, um, we only have two more hours, and we've got to, uh, to give all these folks who are here their opportunity to testify, if that is okay with all of you. Councilman Squilla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll go quick, a lot of my questions have been answered. Um, and again, Dr. Height, thank you for, I know, meeting with council and setting up that partnership with council and, um, uh, having the meeting ahead of time before the SRC vote. I know it, unfortunately, it wasn't the conversation we had about how the applications were going to be set up and what your recommendations are, it wasn't the turnout, but at least the effort was made to, to meet with council and go through that. Um, it did throw some doubt into council in the working relationship between the SRC and, and the district, um, so hopefully, that'll be able to be mended and a better understanding of what the district wants and the SRC wants, uh, we can understand. Because when we get sort of misinformation too, that also helps to build the non-trust that Councilwoman Sanchez has, uh, talked about. Um, as far as, I know, we did some short-term borrowing, uh, with the, the state budget. Has that since been paid back?
No, it has not. No, sir, it has not.
And how much is owed?
Five hundred? It's 575 million.
575 million. Are we still, are we still waiting for the monies to be released from the state?
Yes.
And when, um, what is the debt service on that?
Five million? Is it five million? So, it's three million.
Three million dollars?
Yes.
Um, so, the longer this goes, the, the more money we will owe, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, is there an estimated time that we know from the, from the legislature that we will be receiving funds?
No.
No?
We thought we would have it by now.
Yes, I know, last time we were here, we were talking about that. Uh, and the money that we hear about a surplus, that money is surplus because of the 500 million dollars that was borrowed?
Do you want to talk about that?
The surplus is a point-in-time analysis, so the, uh, the, um-
Just state your name again.
I'm sorry, Ori Monson, the CFO for the district. Um, the, um, the CAFRE that was released that showed the 88 million dollar surplus is a point-in-time analysis, analysis, so as of June 30th of 2015, there was, um, once everything's reconciled, there was 88 million dollars, um, positive fund balance. Um, if you were gonna do the point-in-time today, we have 575 million dollars in short-term debt, uh, so we would have a negative fund balance. Um, every, every view of it is a point-in-time, so effectively, that money was spent, uh, enabling the school district to stay open longer during the budget impasse, is one way to look at it.
So, what's, you're saying we, we're in debt 575 million?
Today, there's short-term debt of 575 million, um, those, and those dollars are being used to cover the operating costs of the district.
And do we know the money that we're potentially going to receive from the state? And/or how much?
Uh, I believe it's in the neighborhood of 750 million, or, or a little more than that. Um, I don't have the exact number.
Okay. Um, and, and I know, I guess, um, you're not gonna be able to answer these questions, but I know we spoke about because of the surplus, uh, when the state eventually goes around to giving us the dollars. And if, if we owe 575 and we expect in 750, it seems like we have a bigger surplus than 88 million, but, um, I'm not sure how. You guys work your numbers.
Um, the two numbers are not the only numbers that go into that equation, so there are other, uh, costs and, um, revenues, expenses. Uh, one of the goals of the five-year budget that we're currently working on is to show how all those numbers would roll in, looking at a five-year projection, uh, with the obvious goal of trying to achieve a structural balance, um, so the discussion's not about the financial hole, but rather how resources can be best invested.
And, uh, from that surplus, I guess, let's go back to Dr. Height, is that, I know you had talked about hiring counselors and, and nurses for the additional dollars that are available?
That, that would be, um, what I would like to, um, make as a, as a set of investments for the next, um, school year. It would, it would not begin this school year, but it would be for the next school year.
Right.
So, those monies would go into, um, making those investments.
Now, now, saying that, I mean, is there also a plan for a, a contract with the PFT to see, or the potential, what that cost may be, or working with a, an arrangement to have a contract with the PFT?
But, well, so, say this question again, Councilman.
The money, the 88 million that we have, it's gonna be for counselors and teachers. Is there any money stored, or is there a, a level of process that you're following, knowing that, I guess, hopefully, come up with a contract with the teachers?
Yes, I mean, so, we would also be looking at, um, some money for workforce investment, and, um, that is, that would speak not just to, um, our, um, colleagues in the PFT, but also to, um, 32BJ, whose contract is- whose contract is up, and CASA, whose contract is up as well.
Right. So, I mean, because, I mean, we spoke about long-term and how we're projecting to spend our dollars. Is there going to be an ask in your budget this year for additional dollars from the city?
We're still putting, we're still putting all of those documents and numbers together, and we are, haven't answered that question yet, so...
You better hurry up.
I know, I know.
We, I mean, obviously, we, going through the process, we hear about pre-K, additional dollars, and, you know, what is council going to do to raise this additional money? Money comes in, request, or it's better to come in early than late.
Yes.
Because it's kind of hard to put all that together, and then we have to wait the constituency base and what we need. We would think that, you know, hopefully, you guys could put that together as soon as possible. And also, if there is a long-term ask, and I, sort of what Councilwoman Sanchez and Councilman O said, we need to know that to see how we are going to proceed into the future. What the state asks, we don't have control over that, obviously. We don't know what they're going to give you. The borrowing money, the debt services that we have, we already have a debt service, I believe. Is it 200 million? What is the debt service for our previous loans before this year, not counting the short-term loans?
Long-term?
Yes.
It's higher than that. I believe it's 270 million?
270 million.
I believe it's the annual, I believe it's the annual long-term debt service. So, in that ballpark.
So, 270 million dollars we have going to our debt services that is not going to our children because of previous borrowing. Now, I understand this borrowing is supposedly short-term. We think it's short-term until the state gives us money. These are things that add to our deficit and the reason why we're not able to do the things that we need to do. So, I think it'd be best practice to come to council with, if there is an ask, if there's not an ask, if the state somehow is going to come through with some money. But we need you to do, we need to believe, first of all, that the district and SRC are working together in conjunction, which maybe there's a little bit of disconnect there. And we also need to know what your expecting numbers are with the new contract for all the people you're dealing with, and what's that going to cost and how we need to fund that. The last possible thing to do is, is we have enough money for this, if we have this, and then we have a contract that is not fundable. So we need to know that ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If it is okay with my colleagues, because I know all of you have more questions, but I think we only have two more hours. Boy, are you all lucky. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Panel two, Representative Dr. James R. Robach. House of Representatives, Otis Hackney. Mayor's Education Office, Susan Gobresty. Mayor's Education Office, Barbara Maderman, Graduate Philadelphia. Thomas Scheid, Independence Charter School, and Dave Hardy, Independence Charter School. Let me note, as we say that, that, again, panel six, submitted written testimony only, that's Deborah Diamond. So we'll try to move as quickly as we can. Thank you for your patience. And we thank panel one, Farah Jimenez, Dr. Hyde, and Jerry Jordan for their patience. I'm only sorry they scheduled another hearing. We could have been here till six. Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for your patience. Representative Robach, would you like to begin?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I want to thank City Councilwoman Janie Blackwell and the fellow of your City Council Committee on Education for providing me with the opportunity to present testimony on the status of public schools in Philadelphia, and more importantly, what we must do to provide a brighter future for our children in our, in Philadelphia Public Schools. As State Representative of 188th Legislative District, as Democratic Chairman of the House Education Committee, as a Board Member of the Community College of Philadelphia, and as a graduate of the Philadelphia Public School System, I am here to declare that there is nothing more important that we as citizens do than what we, than the investment we provide for educating our children. The importance of education is relevant to all, in all of our lives, the financial condition of the state, and its citizens, and the future of our children, and equally important to the building of strong communities, neighborhoods, and citizenship. Today, I want to address three areas related to the direction of the Philadelphia School District. And I believe that everyone has a copy of my testimony, so I'm not going to read it word for word. I want to highlight some of the various points within that testimony.
Thank you.
When I testified before this same committee in 2013, I spoke out in favor of returning control of the School District of Philadelphia to the city and its citizens. Since then, it has become even more apparent that the time for the control of the School District of Philadelphia be returned to the citizens of Philadelphia. Unfortunately, since the state takeover of the school district, I believe that the trust between the school district and neighborhoods where our schools are located has been severely weakened. In addition, I believe there will be better academic performance of all of our students, as well as better academic and financial accountability of our school district when the control of the school district is returned to the citizens of Philadelphia. For these reasons, I am encouraging the city councils to seriously consider the issue surrounding a return of the school district to the citizens as part of the important work of improving the education of our children. That is to say, I believe we ought to end the SRC, to summarize that. The state needs further to restore funding to school districts that were cut by the corporate administration, and needs to increase education funding under the new basic education funding. There were a $3 billion cumulative basic education funding cuts by the corporate administration between 2011 and 2015. Because of these significant cuts to public education, the state first needs to restore in this, in the 2015-16 year, these funding cuts that disproportionately hurt poorer school districts. In the budget agreement, that was agreed to by the Governor for Legislative Caucuses, a compromise was reached to distribute 350 million increase in basic education funding. Because of the large cuts in state funding for the Philadelphia School District, the compromise hybrid funding formula would have provided Philadelphia with a 98.7 million increase for the 2015-2016 school year compared to an only 65.7 million increase under the new basic education formula. That's a $33 million difference. So it's important where we start and how we move forward. After restoring the cuts of education funding in the 2015-16 budget, the state needs to increase education funding using the new basic education formula. Are there any number of things that are important about that formula? And I want to put it in a context because the new formula seeks to address the fact that while the state does rank in the top 10 overall, among all states in funding for public education, Pennsylvania at the same time has the largest difference in state and local funding between the poorest and wealthiest school districts. This means that although we drive state dollars out, the actual impact is lessened by the fact that the disparity in the way those dollars go into poor and less, and affluent districts. Further, the new funding formula recognizes for the first time the impact of poverty and student risks associated with poverty. The new formula, for the first time, has a factor for the number of children in a school district that attend charter schools, and attempts to address the problem of the fixed clause, which we dealt with by the School District of Philadelphia in addressing this issue, and also seeks to address the need to restore the process of state money going to school districts to deal with the money driven, to deal with the problem of the shift of students from traditional public schools to charter schools. Then too, we must also ensure that all students are prepared to enter school and to learn. We ought to put more emphasis on basic education, and we must pass laws that deal with cyber and charter school reform and address both the funding and governance issues to ensure that financial and academic accountability concerns about charters and cyber charters are addressed. Then too, I would argue that we ought to be looking at the issue of improving our schools through community schools. And I'll just note that I am a strong supporter of the idea of community schools. I would note that this is, in part, a type of education that is not infrequently used in the suburban districts which surround us, where you have a linking of all the resources of government with the schools, the recreation centers, all those services come together in centers that promote education. I cannot believe but that this will be beneficial to our children here in Philadelphia. I note the broad base of support that has been evidenced by this, from the mayor to the president of the City Council, to the president of the PFT. It's drawing support from major educational institutions, from both the University of Pennsylvania, which are in my legislative district, as well as Temple. It has the support of Pedro Rivera, the Secretary of Education, who was chairman of this model when he was the superintendent of the Lancaster School District, and whose roots are from, are here in Philadelphia. So you have the support on the state level that ought to be able to facilitate reaching the goal of using community schools as a model for promoting educational excellence. Excellence. In the end, then, we need to do everything we can to ensure that our students have a good level of education. We need to strengthen our schools by increasing resources, but through community schooling, which in turn will strengthen our neighborhoods and our communities. We need to proactively work together in order to achieve these goals. I apologize for sort of running through this, but I wanted to at least put the major ideas on the table. Thank you.
And you did. It was excellent. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Chairwoman Blackwell, and members of City Council for hosting this hearing today. To the members of the Committee on Education, with the opportunity to testify before you today on Resolution Number 160033, sponsored by Chairman, Chairwoman Blackwell, regarding the state of Philadelphia schools and ensuring that all students receive a quality education and the supportive services they need for positive outcomes. In particular, I would like to discuss how the goals of the Mayor's Office of Education and our plans to work with the district, council, and the community will support the overall effort to redress the concerns raised in this resolution and do so in equitable and transparent manner. Over the past several years...
Excuse me, would you identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry. Good morning, I'm Otis Hackney, Chief Education Officer for the City of Philadelphia. It's my first time, thank you. Over the past several years, state budget cuts have taken a profound toll on the district's ability to provide proper staffing for every school. Our office is supportive of council's effort to ensure that the district provides equitable access to vital supportive services. These resources matter for every single, every single one of Philadelphia students, and we are actively working to advocate for adequate and equitable funding from the state. The Mayor's Office of Education is committed to a brighter future for Philadelphia's children and working hard with council, the mayor, and the district to reevaluate how we support our children in schools, by expanding access to quality pre-K, creating community schools, and creating a true career pipeline through Career and Technical Education, which we call CTE, courses which are targeting, which are targeting key ways to support and strengthen the educational environment for children. These crucial changes are in response to a growing body of knowledge about how to most effectively meet the needs of children. Our office is looking forward to working with council and communities to play a more active role and develop new strategies to improve equity across the city. This means expanding access by engaging more children, more neighborhoods, and more schools and programs that improve outcomes and quality of life for children. It means engaging more people, more partners, and more resources, so that decisions are made transparently and as a community. To that end, our main areas of focus are as follows: pre-K, community schools, STEM, career and technical education, and the support of students in their post-secondary pursuits. Our children enter kindergarten with noticeable differences in education, social, emotional, and behavioral skills. Some of our children, some of Philadelphia's three- and four-year-old children are already fortunate enough to have access to quality pre-K options in their neighborhood, which allow them to come to their first, to their first day of kindergarten, ready to learn. However, nearly 13,000 three- and four-year-olds lack this basic opportunity. This forces kindergarten teachers to spend their time handling remedial behavior and social or emotional issues in order to make their classrooms a safe and productive learning environment. Given that 90% of brain development occurs before age five, our city should put forth every effort to reach children at an earlier age to identify potential mental health barriers and to support positive social-emotional development. Our office is working together with the state, district, and council to ensure that 13,000 children without access to quality pre-K are given an equal opportunity to attend a quality pre-K center in their neighborhood. To date, we have partnered with the state and neighborhood providers to enroll an additional 1,500 kids and quality pre-K seats in the last three months. We look forward to expanding upon this early success. Further, many students lack the resources necessary to succeed in their learning environments, and all too many people go without access to vital social and government services. The community school strategy will work to improve the way we reach children and families to meet their needs. The administration maintains a core belief that this effort will strengthen schools, which in turn will help strengthen neighborhoods across the city and change learning conditions for children. The leadership shown by the mayor, Council President Clark, have provided a vision, and our office will be working to make it into a reality for the city. The community school strategy focuses on meeting comprehensive needs of children and families, delivering health services, and better aligning city service and partnerships. The goal is to use schools as community centers, which translate into reaching more people. The strategy relies on strong community engagement and decision-making and fully utilizing partnership opportunities, one of the strengths of our city. As we partner with the district to help deliver for our citizens, we are dedicated to Mayor Kenny's message that government functions properly when it is accessible and accountable to the people. Our office is committed to the values of equity, accountability, collaboration, and results, as we are in partnership with stakeholders across the city to implement a successful community school strategy. There is great work happening throughout the city, and there is tremendous work before us, specifically around providing more equitable access to education and therefore economic opportunities. In the spring of 2015, the Mayor's Office of Education conducted, conducted a STEM supply and demand analysis that identified by zip code areas of the city where historically vulnerable populations, chiefly African-American and Latino, continue to suffer from minimal access to STEM programs and professionals. We labeled these areas as STEM deserts. There are nine such STEM deserts in Philadelphia. Mayor Kenny's focus on initiatives like quality pre-K, community schools, and career and technical education will help to expand the STEM pipeline from the earliest grades through adult education. The goal, the goal is for Mayor Kenny's major educational initiatives to work in collaboration and reinforcing, in a reinforcing fashion, as opposed to the siloed approach we too often see. The Mayor's Office of Education is leading the administration's effort to develop a plan to support, amplify, and grow CTE. Our areas of focus include recruiting and preparing qualified teachers, increased work-based experience and job placement, aligning and developing K-12 CTE curriculum, coordinating with the five-county region, Philadelphia, Montgomery, Bucks, Chester, and Delaware, and communicating the benefits of CTE to all stakeholder groups. Collaboration with the corporate and labor community will be key. We want our students not just to be employable, but to be employed. I would like to end my testimony by thanking the sponsor, Chairwoman Blackwell, and the committee for drawing attention to such an important issue and allowing me this opportunity to appear before you today. Our children and schools deserve every opportunity and support possible to become successful, prosperous young adults. It is in this city's best interest to come together to ensure that we are setting up our students for success and that we provide every opportunity for our educators to focus on what they do best: teach. I would be happy to answer any questions the committee may have after the other presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions the committee may have after the other presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Susan Gobreski. Thank you. And then our Barbara Matalman.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Gobreski, and I appear today before you as the new director for community schools. I want to say thank you for having us here to talk about the work that we're doing in the mayor's office of education and to talk about the state of Philadelphia schools and what they need to succeed. Just to follow up, I just wanted to highlight a couple of key points about the work that we're looking at for community schools and engaging people across Philadelphia in developing the strategy. We know that resources matter. City council has done yeoman's work in terms of increasing financial support to the students of Philadelphia, and we think it's very important. As we're all aware, the state cuts have been really devastating. Mayor Kenny is committed to supporting our children and implementing strategies by looking differently at the way that the city can support schools and neighborhoods. And the community school strategy is our strategy to begin to more substantially have the city support the way that we address the needs of children and families. At its core, the community school strategy focuses on meeting the needs of the whole child, providing more comprehensive supports, ranging from things like health services, the strategic alignment of city services, and looking at partnerships. Importantly, it is also an equity strategy. We believe that this is an important priority. Chairwoman Blackwell has often spoke about the need for community engagement and getting a broader group of people involved and knowledgeable about how partnerships are formed and how programs are provided. We share this vision. A high-functioning community school strategy involves active, meaningful community engagement, where parents, educators, administrators, and members from the community come together to assess local needs, make decisions about the priorities to meet those needs, and figure out how to embrace the community and work with community providers. Our office is dedicated to partnering with the district, council, and other stakeholders to begin and sustain this engagement process. One of the things we'll be focusing on is this needs assessment, supporting both 25 schools that the mayor has committed to in four years, and providing technical assistance to a greater number of communities to support them in the process of doing these needs assessments and being able to get more engaged in the process and identify the needs. The coordinator will allow Philadelphians a direct point of access to government, ensuring accountability in programming, and helping with equity of services. These supports, along with this intentional alignment of city services, will allow Philadelphia to focus on how we can help meet the needs of the whole child and to help create an environment and infrastructure that will allow the city and the district to work together to implement the strategy on a broader scale. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. If you will excuse me, because there's another briefing going on at the same time. Councilwoman Gimm has to lead, we'll let her make her statement. And also, Councilwoman Parker, we'll go back, because we still have for this panel Barbara Matalman, Thomas Scheid, and Dave Arden.
And I will definitely come back after the hearing. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I just want to say what a pleasure it is to welcome Mr. Roebuck, Representative Roebuck, Mr. Hackney, Ms. Gobreski, in all of our respective spaces. So, just the one statement that I wanted to bring up very quickly, Representative Roebuck in particular, and for Mr. Hackney in his office, is that previously we've had some serious concerns about the state of the school district's resources. And I think that there are shifting definitions of what is considered, as we heard a little bit earlier, not agreed upon necessarily, definitions about what may be under-resourced. So for example, the class size question did come up. And the bigger issue is that a lawsuit was filed with the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and we've had some testimony before indicating that the school district of Philadelphia may not even be able to fulfill the state curricular code requirements. And so we do need an entity to be seriously reviewing and auditing the school district for its adherence and commitment to upholding the Pennsylvania school code. And that to me is something that has to be a responsibility of certain oversight bodies. You know, obviously, we have an SRC that hasn't, they're differing agreements on how effective that's been. But we, at this point, we are looking to the state to be able to help us take a look at that very seriously. And that's the situation that we saw in the teacher vacancies list that the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, as well as the school district, has been providing us with data, which indicates that there are students currently that are not receiving biology, that aren't receiving physics, that are missing out on grades. There's some indication that we heard earlier from Dr. Height, which we don't have clarity on, that students may not have seen a regular teacher since the start of school, that there may be cases of that. And the state code mandates that students receive 900 hours of instruction, and this should not be substitute, or temporary, or ad hoc, or, you know, by-the-bye kind of instruction. This is supposed to be a serious commitment to education and the learning process of young people, for which we assume that we're assessing them, we're rating them, we are making assumptions and validations about their teachers, about the quality of their schools, and their, by large extension, their families in our city. So my request would be, first of all, to say how grateful I am that we're in partnership together, that I have tremendous amounts of faith in the work that we're going to be doing collaboratively, but to also request your assistance in helping do some serious oversight on the district, because this is not just an issue of budget cuts. I think that this is seriously cutting at the fundamental mission of whether the district is able to execute its responsibilities, and that's putting a teacher 900 hours of instruction, a full curriculum, as mandated and authorized by the state code and the Constitution of Pennsylvania. And I don't think that we're fulfilling it, and we need to ask questions about who's looking that over and who's going to correct it.
I am aware that there are a number of proposals from my colleagues about, in fact, having a forensic audit of the school district of Philadelphia. So I know that is something that's in process. I would just suggest, as I said, I'm a product of the Philadelphia school district, and I went to Central. So I went to one of the two purely academic prep schools in the city. But what strikes me is that when I was in high school, which I'd like to think really wasn't that long ago, the basic difference among the schools was minimal. I grew up in West Philadelphia. My friends were going to West Philadelphia, to Overbrook, to Bartram. We were talking about exactly the same things. You're reading the same things in English Lit, we're taking the same science and math courses, we're doing the same curriculum. That doesn't exist anymore. And I think that's a fundamental flaw in the school district. In part, I think it's a product of the fact that when I was in school, there were maybe 25 high schools. We now have 85, or 80. How can all 80 be equal in terms of even their ability to offer things? I mean, that's part of the problem. And it struck me way back when I talked to this committee or others in school district, and they talked about, oh, well, we're going to prioritize languages, so you can either take Spanish or Mandarin Chinese. Well, what if I want to take Latin, or French, or German? Does that mean that that's not an option for me in Philadelphia? But I think we've narrowed things down in a way that's detrimental to promoting learning for our students. And we need to address that as a fundamental thing as we move forward. I hope I answered your question at least in part, anyway.
Good afternoon again. I think the work that we're going to do from the mayor's office of education in terms of addressing some of that level of accountability is how we engage the community. We're going to do a lot of work as we develop community schools, finding the right partners, but engaging the community in terms of asking them about the resources and programs they would like to see. And then helping to provide the support that they'll need in order to have those programs running, up and running successfully in their school. The accountability will come in in terms of how we engage the parents and getting them to be more engaged. One of the major components to a community school is the site-based governance or school advisory councils. I know that the district is actually having a meeting tomorrow, on the second, in terms of how they're assessing the status of their school advisory councils. And we want to work closely with them to make sure that those are up and running successfully as we work on this strategy or this community schools approach. In terms of our communication, we have been in great communication with the district on a regular basis through this process, and we will continue to do so, but also in partnership, like as I stated in my comments earlier, with city council to make sure that you're, you know, kept up to speed in terms of progress, obstacles, challenges, so that way we can provide these services in a much more effective and intentional manner for the children of our city.
Yep. Thank you. And just for clarity, I just want to separate out the community schools conversation, because I think that's a separate issue. I'm talking about formally using and exercising the powers of both your offices to ensure that basic standards are met within the school district in terms of adherence to the school code, curriculum, 900 hours of instruction. This is not, this is well beyond, I mean, it should be the role of the SRC, but I do not understand why it's not happening there, and clearly it's not. And I think that in the absence of an SRC that's going to uphold these curricular requirements and pay attention to them, I'm making an appeal both to the state legislature and to your office, Mr. Hackney, to ensure that some of this gets looked at in a very serious way and that we exercise all of our mutual powers to ensure that the most minimal of minimum standards is at least being guaranteed to our young people. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And let me say thank you all for being here. I just have two very quick comments. One, Chairman Roebuck, I want to thank you so very much for reflecting something that I'm not sure people pay a lot of attention to when this issue of charter school reimbursement comes up in this whole discussion about the funding of public education. You state that this formula will, for the first time, factor for the number of students in the school district that attend charter schools to address the fixed cost that school districts like Philadelphia must still pay to educate its students. So sometimes I often hear those who really do have the best interests of the school district of Philadelphia at heart, talking about the importance of refunding the charter school reimbursement line item. And I often say charter school reimbursement is a particularly important line of funding for the school district of Philadelphia, but we don't want it as a line item the way it was, because then it is subject to the vagaries of the budget process, and it can allow Philadelphia to end up like when the Commonwealth established the distressed schools line item, you'll remember. And if there was a poster child of what a distressed school district looked like, it was Philadelphia, but yet and still Philadelphia didn't qualify. So your comments direct us to the fact that leaders like yourself were able to advocate for the charter school reimbursement funding to be built into the formula, so it is not subject to the politics of school funding. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And to Mr. Hackney, there was an article recently that was in the news and circulated wildly amongst my alumni association about our young people in college sort of deciding to major in industries that are not giving them the strongest return on investment so that they can be in a good position to pay down the high student loan debt that many of us are seeing with our undergraduate students across the country. So I wanted to say kudos to Mr. Hackney, looking forward to working, Ms. Gobreski, with the administration on how we find local partners in the neighborhood who don't have a traditional pipeline into careers associated with technical education. But our neighbors are clamoring for them, you know, they want to know, wait, if I'm not interested in attending a college, there is a skill where I can make a wage that will allow me to be independent and take care of my family, and I could want to become a plumber and electrician and a carpenter, you know, and automotive expert. And we need to support that, developing that kind of foundation in neighborhoods across the city of Philadelphia. So I'm looking forward to working in partnership with the district to do just that. And thank you for saying what a lot of people think is pretty old and antiquated. Councilwoman Blackwell, I was talking to a community group, and I told them that home ec helped me learn how to sew a button, and the kids looked up at me like I was speaking Greek, home ec. But home ec and shop and, you know, learning to work with metals, we did all of those things. And so I just wanted to echo the importance in Mr. Hackney's testimony.
That used to be part of the curriculum.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely correct. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. I agree. Councilman O.
All right. I do understand we have more witnesses to testify, but I do have a question before I start losing some witnesses. I was hoping that I'd get to ask this with Otis Hackney here, but you're all here. The issue of the SRC going to Harrisburg with a plan and with a plan of bringing the school up to a certain level that satisfies them, we talked about. And the answer that I got after a couple of go-rounds, you know, to just solidify, was $800 million over five years. $800 million over five years is $160 million per year. That does not seem to be anything more than keeping the current level of poor performance without any actual improvements. In other words, $160 million is not above and beyond the type of ask. And I wanted to know from the SRC or from the administration or a month in, because I was trying to figure out, what was the base that the school district gets? I thought it was like around 2.2 billion, 2.3 billion, and then maybe 2.4, and then it needs some additional money from the state on top of the taxes it gets, and then has requested the city. I would like to know what you think about the SRC, your thoughts on their plan of improving the schools. Have you seen a plan? Is it 800 million over five years? Anybody?
I can't say I've seen the plan, no. And I think there is a disconnect between what is happening at SRC and what's happening in Harrisburg. I'm only the Democratic Chair of the House Education Committee.
No, thank you very much.
But I'm not having a real pipeline in terms of information, or, I'd sort of like to have the opportunity for input. I mean, if there's a plan being developed, it would be helpful to have the opportunity to have input into that plan. That doesn't happen.
What I've been frustrated about is that the SRC has been around for 15 years, and at least in the four years that I've been here, now going on to the fifth, I have not seen an actual plan of improving buildings, putting in counselors, putting in music and art. I just would like to know, because I think the legislature would like to know, and people would like to know, how much does that cost in total in a reasonable amount of time? Even if you can't get the money, at least you have presented a plan. And if the SRC does not write a plan, who is going to write that plan? I don't think legislators from Cambridge County are going to write that plan. I think it's, you know, it's not, it's very difficult for city council to write that plan. Who is writing that plan? I would think that, just from my experience here, any time of, any type of modest improvements to the school district in general, just trying to bring it up to some type of acceptable standard would be more like 1.2 or 3 billion dollars per year. I'm sorry, not per year, you know, but more like 1.3, 1.5 billion over five years, modestly speaking. And I can't understand that there's an actual plan of really improving the schools when we're talking about 160 million per year over five years.
I think my observation in part would be that if you were to get to that level, then you would need to create a new kind of legislature in Harrisburg. You have a legislature that is not talking about tax increases, a legislature that doesn't want to spend more money. And that's where we've run into problems, that's why we don't have a budget today because of that. So the challenge then is to give those who have opposed- of that. So the challenge then is to give those who have opposed passing a budget, which are large in one of the legislative caucuses, to accept your premise, that instead of ignoring the problem, we're hoping it will go away, we need to address it straight on.
I'm going to say this, just, I agree with you. I have been to Harrisburg, and I have spoken to Republicans. What they appear to me to want is a change in the paradigm in Philadelphia, so that they have confidence that money will not be wasted. They want a different, I understand, but I'm just telling you what my kind of interaction has been. They want a reform of the education process, and then we can talk about a number. Now, they may not fund that number, but I believe we should give them a number. If we don't give them a number, then they don't have that number on their plate. You know, I understand the challenges in Harrisburg, but I believe on behalf of the city of Philadelphia, we should be putting a number in front of Harrisburg in terms of what kind of funding we are trying to get from the state.
But Councilman O, I would say this to you. Philadelphia is being made the poster child for a problem that is not Philadelphia's problem. The problem of education funding hits most directly in the rural districts in Pennsylvania. It's not Philadelphia. They are the districts that are on the edge of economic collapse. They're the districts that are in distress by state definition. So if they're totally us being accountable, then it's not just a Philadelphia, it's a way we do education problem. And I would caution you not to fall into that trap.
I'm not.
Because that is a trap. It's saying that somehow we have to be accountable, we have to do all these things, everyone else is perfect. That's not true.
Well, let me say this. The, I don't disagree with you. I mean, basically, the funding formula in Pennsylvania, based on real estate taxes, has been very problematic. But I'm not a state legislator. I'm just a city councilman, so I only deal with the school district of Philadelphia. But within the school district of Philadelphia, even though we're just one district, we have such great inequity in our, in our school system, as everyone knows and has talked about.
But I would also just make one other point. Understand that some school districts get far greater percentage of money from the state. They get up to 70% of their budgets in some instances from the state. We don't come close to that.
School districts.
The school district, yes.
Yes, and, and.
And that's direct state money. And when we ask for money, it's as if somehow we are super rich, or we're somehow so inept, we're mismanaging the money. That's simply an argument that obscures the issue.
So my point to the SRC then will be this, what you're saying. How much money are we asking for, and what does it do? If we are continuing to ask for $160 million to keep this, the ship sinking at a slow rate, I think that is, that is not, I think the SRC has to put the amount of money it has calculated based on their plan of improving schools across the board in neighborhoods, and come to a process that they can defend and advocate for. And if you don't have that plan, and I don't have that plan, other than $160 million, which seems to be the average that they ask for every year, I don't see that there is a plan to improve schools across the boards in Philadelphia.
I don't disagree.
Okay, well, if.
Well, I mean, but you ought to be addressing this to the SRC, which is the administrative group that's supposed to be running the school system.
Yes, I did, I did ask him, and they clearly told me that they have a plan of $800 million over five years. And it appears that neither the mayor nor the legislature has seen that plan. And I don't think it's enough money, and I don't think it's articulate. That's why I said, I don't think that's a plan.
And I would suggest one other thing, just from what you just said. The problem goes back to who's administering the district. I mean, if you look at the evaluation of schools across the state, that some of the best schools in the state are in this city, in the public schools in this city. But the administration is not equal. It doesn't extend that to address the lower performing schools, and that remains a recurring problem, and becomes then the focal point of interest, that schools in Philadelphia are not performing. They don't talk about the ones that are. They don't talk about the schools that are probably number one in the state. They talk about the low performing schools. And that's an image problem in part that rests with the administrators who don't do a good job of addressing the critical problem in the area of low performing schools.
Agreed. Thank you. Yes?
And Mr. Hackney got called away to a meeting, but just as a point of clarification, if they, if we increased funding, the school district of Philadelphia increased funding by 160 million a year, it would be 160, and then 320, and then 480. And what you're talking about is getting to the question of adequacy. We were on track a few years ago through something that was called the costing out study, to identify what we really need in Philadelphia. And it is the right question. We all need to be asking it and talking about it. What do we need to properly educate a kid, and how do we make sure that happens? So I think it's a good conversation. But it would be, it wouldn't just be 160 million per year. It would increase every year.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Ms. Matalman?
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Matalman, and I'm the Executive Director of Graduate Philadelphia. Thank you, Education Committee Chairwoman Blackwell, and city council members for inviting me to testify regarding ensuring all students have access to a quality education. I'm pleased to be here to talk about Graduate Philadelphia and how our services connect to this very important resolution. Graduate Philadelphia is an organization that works with comebackers, adults who have some college credit and want to complete their degree. Since 2008, Graduate Philadelphia has helped thousands of adults return to college with over 700 graduating. We are currently working with 2,200 adults who are either exploring their options, currently in school, or have recently graduated with a two- or four-year degree. Over 70% of the comebackers we serve are African-American, female, and heads of households. 88% are ages 19 to 55, and 90% earn less than $42,000, half earn less than $24,000. All live in the Philadelphia area. They are motivated to return to complete their degree, but need some preparatory work in order to be successful, and supports to make sure they stay in school and complete their degree. Our free one-on-one advising services and assistance are provided to students from their first inquiry all the way through degree completion. We lead a consortium of 10 regional colleges and universities with proven success in their adult-focused programming, such as online learning, accelerated classes, acceptance of prior credits and knowledge. These colleges partner in providing services and tracking outcome data. There are Chestnut College, Community College of Philadelphia, Pierce College, Cabrini College, Philadelphia University, Alvernia University, Temple University, Thomas Edison State University, Bloomsburg University, and Westchester University. Graduate Philadelphia has changed the public framing of adults completing college from a narrative of personal failure to one of talent potential. Helping adults complete college, and relatedly, a new focus on college retention and completion for traditional college students, is now on economic development agendas throughout the region. Whenever we talk about children and education, we have to talk about their parents or the adults in their lives. According to a Lumina Foundation study, by 2020, 2/3 of jobs will require a college credential. Helping an adult complete a college degree allows them to find a better job in good and bad economic times. And a major risk for dropping out of high school is not having an adult in the home with a college degree. Thus, every adult that graduate Philadelphia or another organization helps complete school helps the young people in their lives complete high school and college. Adults who have a college degree are happier, healthier, pay more taxes, commit less crime, and require less taxpayer assistance. Having a degree directly correlates to employment. In Philadelphia, which has one of the highest poverty rates in the country, this issue is even more important. Many of our families have to work more than one job to make ends meet. They need help figuring out how they can reengage and complete their college degree, as well as follow a course of study in a subject area where they can get a better job, with families sustaining wages once they complete their degree. Graduate Philadelphia offers advising service at the Career Link offices throughout Philadelphia for just this reason. Adults go to Career Link to get a job, many of which require a college degree. Graduates' advisors can help them figure out the best academic program and learning module to fit their specific needs, so adults can go back to school and then be qualified to get a decent job. Adults also need help on how to afford their degree while working part-time or full-time and taking care of their families. And they need a support system comprised of family members, community members, and professionals who can help them navigate their educational path. When children see their parents taking care of themselves and working to make a better life for their families, they model similar behavior. A recent Johns Hopkins study noted that where children started out in life had a large impact on where they ended up. The study followed children for 25 years and showed that a child's early years greatly influenced their later life in terms of education, job attainment. This study clearly indicates the importance of helping to raise the socioeconomic levels of all families in order to influence the success of subsequent generations. Graduate Philadelphia supports the notion that all students must have access to a quality education and programs that ensure they are set up to achieve. What's often missing from this conversation is the importance of supporting the adults in the lives of our children who either haven't started or haven't completed their college degree, and the effect it has on their children. Every adult we help helps the people in their family and social circle succeed. At a time when our schools, our children, and their families need all the help and support they can get, I believe we need to work together to make sure the entire family can be successful. Graduate Philadelphia would be pleased to collaborate with city council members, as well as colleagues at other organizations, to make sure this becomes a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I apologize. I would just like to, because I have the actual numbers that was given to me. The school district typical budget, I understand, is 2.9 billion, 2.8 billion, somewhere around there. It's not adequate. It's just to maintain the current dropping performance. But what I have from 2016 is that the governor and the mayor are proposing $264.7 million in new funding. However, that only brings it to 2.8 billion. So it's still the same number, because there's 2.5 billion in revenues, 2.68 billion in expenditures, leaving a ultimately $84.7 million deficit, once we add on the 6.9% from the fund balance. And then with 1.59.4%, 159.4, $100 million, there's your 160, and 105 million from the city, subtracting the deficit, when you add that, 2.6 billion to 180, you end up with 2.8 billion. It's about the same budget. I don't see where the additional funding is for any improvement here. So I'll just say that I really would like to see a plan that actually brings equity to the neighborhood schools, you know, brings programming, budgets that's not based on, you know, not having a contract with the teachers, like the whole thing. Like, give us an actual budget to repair the schools and a plan. So I know I'm just kind of shouting out into space, but thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you both. And then we'll ask David Hardy and Mr. Thomas Shad, both from Charter Schools Boys Latin, David Hardy and Indy Penance for New Charter School in Southwest. Please identify yourself for the record and then begin your testimony.
Good morning. My name is David Hardy. I'm the CEO of Boys Latin Charter School. I am going to try and rush through this, just get to the kind of the meat of the thing. And, I mean, the first thing I talked about was, in my remarks, were the plight of 1/3 of all public school students, and that's African-American and Latino males, how poorly we're serving these young men. And one thing I want to say is that 10 years ago, the Weekly Standard published an article called "Where the Boys Aren't," bemoaning the dearth of males in college. They stated that at that time, the ratio of females to males enrolled in college was 58 to 42, 58 females for every 42 males. It said that according to the U.S. Department of Education, by the fourth year of college, because the male rate, the males have a higher dropout rate, that the college advantage for females grew 60-40. The article went on to say that the problem, that the problem with lower college enrollment, once confined to poor African-American males, is now an issue for Latinos and white males of every socioeconomic level. So I come back here again, somewhat like a broken record. I come to advocate for more opportunity for our young men. We know there's a myriad of challenges faced by the Philadelphia Public School District and charters as well. Yet none has garnered fewer resources or even a basic recognition that it is, in fact, a problem. Just look at the top district high schools. All of them send more girls to college, or send girls to college at a higher rate than boys. Boys cannot attend girls' highs, so that's out of the question. Of the rest of the selective admission schools, only engineering and science enrolls more boys than girls. And here, girls still matriculate to college at higher rates than boys. At our school, which is all boys, we're the only charter school that sends more boys to college than girls. We're the only charter school that has more boys than girls. In the 1980s, there was talk of the lack of opportunity for girls to attend college. The female-to-male ratio at that time was 45 to 55, 45 women for every 55 men. Some call that a crisis. I shudder what they would call the current environment. As a leader of an all-male school, I am deeply engaged with the male college matriculation data. Most people in this city are engaged at the student level. If their son or sons have matriculated to college, they're happy with that rate. If they have not, they are not. These people who are not pleased do not know how many people feel the same way as they do. Why? Because the district, since the start of the height administration, has refused to release this data in a disaggregated form. We look at district-wide rates and see some improvement. What they fail to disclose is that the failure is concentrated in a few student groups. The college matriculation rate for Latino and African-American males remain the lowest in the city, and there are scarcely any, there is scarcely any improvement in their performance. The most recent comprehensive data available is from the class of 2009. We know girls attended rate, attended college at a rate that was 12 points higher than boys. When you compare racial and gender categories, you find that Asian girls attended college at a rate of 66%, whereas Latino boys were only at 23%. Until we have the courage to admit that this is a serious problem, there can be no consensus on what to do to address it. The district's shameful, shamefully secretive approach is a disservice to the students and their families, and is especially misleading to the taxpayers who fund public education. They pay for education for all students. They would find it hard to imagine such a significant disparity in student outcomes. I did not volunteer to be the advocate for Black and Latino boys, nor was I elected. I did not volunteer to be the advocate for Black and Latino boys, nor was I elected to do so. My familiarity with this issue is a product of my work at an all-male high school in West Philadelphia. From my vantage point, the problem is crystal clear and exceedingly urgent. We are losing generations of men. We are crippling future families. We are wasting valuable human capital in our city when we fail to ensure adequate educational opportunity for all. We know there are many factors that influence student success in high school. Individual factors like socioeconomic status, nutrition, self-esteem, identity issues. Parental factors involving the level of parental participation in a child's education. These factors, these are factors over which we have little control. These are issues which community school advocates feel we should address, but this cannot be at the expense of academic success. We can come, we can, oh, excuse me, what we can control are the school factors. Teacher expectation perceptions, teacher engagement and commitment, and a culturally responsive instructional environment. But what is paramount is a commitment from those who run the district to provide an accurate accounting of the success or lack thereof of every student segment. We may not like the numbers we see, but we will never be in a position to address them, to address this problem without understanding, without an understanding of its magnitude. What is, what is it that the district does not want us to know? I repeat, what is it that the district does not want us to know? I think we have an idea already, and it's blatantly obvious. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Shide.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell and members of the City Council on Education, bringing forth the importance of quality education choices and opportunities for all of the students and families in Philadelphia. My name is Tom Shide. I'm the CEO of Independence Charter School in Center City. Independence Charter School is a community-based K-8, 800-seat public charter school whose founders were parents who wanted to give families a choice in educational opportunities. Our school is one of academic excellence centrally located in Philadelphia and serving a diverse community of learners. We represent students from over 40 zip codes. ICS provides an intellectually stimulating curriculum with a global focus designed to develop independent thoughtful global citizens. We emphasize second language acquisition, integrate arts, ideas, and histories from around the world. We recently held our annual public lottery in which over 1,900 applications were received since November 1st. Last February, the SRC approved our application to open a new K-8 school to serve more families in Philadelphia. Independence Charter School West will open this fall and will serve families in West and Southwest Philadelphia, serving students in the Sayer, Bartram, and Overbrook High School districts. ICS West held their first lottery on February 16th at the Myers Rec Center at 58th and King Sessing Avenue with a large number of families in attendance. Over 520 applications were received, 300 students got seats in grades K through 3. We are excited to become a community partner, a community resource to the families in West and Southwest Philadelphia. We believe we are responsible to the larger community and to one another. We strive to be active stewards of the local and global community. We believe that to reach excellence, we must continue to nurture a reflective school community whose members contribute their talents, insights, and hard work in service to our students and to the larger community. ICS has always considered itself, from the inception in 2001, as an educational partner with the School District of Philadelphia. We are currently excited about the partnership we have developed under the guidance of Jefferson University Hospital and Southwork Elementary to help both ICS and Southwork Elementary students with health initiatives. ICS will continue to work with the School District of Philadelphia for the education of all students in Philadelphia. ICS is one of, I believe, one of the only possible charter schools in the state that called for adequate funding for publicly funded schools. To that end, in June of 2014, ICS, along with many school districts throughout the state, adopted the Fair Funding Resolution. Thank you very much for your attention and support.
Thank you very much. We were very pleased to be in your drawing exercise. Boy, I asked the youngsters when I went there with their parents if somebody threatened to beat them up. I mean, they were so eager and so devout and so serious, all of them, to get in your school. We were very, very impressed and look forward to working even more closely with you. David Hardy, what can I tell you? You're a blessing, and we thank you whenever we need ideas and whenever we need to know how charter people think, as well as what your view is of the whole city issue of education you're there. We say thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo your comments and thank you, first of all, for having this important hearing. And yes, David, you've been here not once, not twice, but I want you to know, we are listening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to your incoming class a couple of years back. It was a, it was an eye-opening experience to see so many young men so enthusiastic about education. I also want to thank you for choosing to come to 59th Street for your second location.
63rd.
63rd Street.
I'm in the district, but the wrong street.
Yeah, that's all right. I'll get there. And I pride myself on being able to have visited all 30 of my schools, and you're now one of my targets after the budget season. But I was particularly drawn by your testimony that talks about the at-risk portion, particularly germane to inner-city African-American men. I have the distinction of being the Chair of Public Safety, which oversees the prisons. And I'll never forget when Councilman Good, Councilwoman, talked about the direct correlation between lack of education attainment, particularly in reading, to knowing how planners predict how many jail cells to build by the time they're 18, if they cannot obtain adequate education, particularly in English. So for you to take that portion of young people that are most at risk and turn that around so that they can have an opportunity, they can have a positive self-image, so that they know conflict resolution doesn't happen at the end of a gun, those are worthwhile things that are priceless for the sustain of a community. It is also said that so many families go to those lotteries with expectations of providing that opportunity for their children, but are only turned away. And I've been at a couple of them, and I don't want to go back. I'll tell you why. Because the ones that win feel like they hit the lottery, literally, and the ones that lose go out of the auditorium in a state of distress that I never want to be. You don't want to see that heartbreak, that all they want is to be given a chance for education. So it defies a couple of paradigms, that one, our young people don't want to receive a quality education. It is not true. And that it is a shame to me that we pit public schools against charter schools. It doesn't matter whether it's a public or a charter. We want good schools. And so I applaud you guys for doing what you're doing in any way that I can assist the chairperson of the Education Committee, Councilwoman Blackwell, and other members to move you guys forward. I will. I wanted to say that for the record. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I hate to ask these questions, I know we're so tight on time, but, you know, there is no model in the entire world of best practices in public education that consists of an all-private or an all-charter school system. And as great as your schools are or may be, the charters are lottery, unless they're, I guess, Renaissance, is that right, lottery? You have a charter for males but not females. I went to Central High School. It's a public magnet. It's not for everybody. All of these things, the increase of charters and magnets and specialty schools contradict the idea of a neighborhood public school, a quality neighborhood public school. So far, I have seen no plan from the SRC to improve neighborhood public schools so that we would not need more charter schools. Do you disagree with that? And if so, could you just tell me why or not?
Do I disagree? Absolutely. I think the days of the neighborhood school have long passed. I think that, at the high school level, I think that what happens is, you know, what's his name, Representative Roebuck talked about the 1960s and how wonderful it was in a neighborhood school. And it was. I was there too. I mean, a lot of people in this room know what I'm talking about. You had multiple curriculums. You had, you could get the same kind of education in Bartram or Overbrook or Alney where I went that you could at Central. They had star classes and rapid classes and that kind of thing. Those schools are all about a third of the size that they used to be. I mean, when I went to Alney, it was 450 students in there. They closed with less than 1,500 students, and they converted it to a charter. Bartram was another one, 4,500 students. Right now, I'll bet you it's less than 1,000 students in there. Those days are over, and when you see more specialized schools, you see, you know, it was just two selective admission schools when you went to Central. Now there's a whole bunch of them, okay? Education has changed. It's become more personable, more personal, and it's become more direct in, more, excuse me, specialized in the type of thing. Engineering and Science, Science Leadership Academy, Kappa, those are all different types of education, but you can deliver all of those types in a high-quality manner. What is tough is to take a neighborhood high school, when you've had the exodus of all these students going to these specialized high schools, so all you have left are students who didn't really have a focus, and now you're trying to turn that into something that's going to work. I just think it's hard to do. And, you know, look, I'm not saying that these schools can't be changed. They need to be changed in focus, but a building with 4,000 students in it for a high school in a city, those days are over, I think.
Well, they do work in, you know, in many high-performing school districts, the best in, the best in the world. Urban, yes. But, you know, that's your opinion. In my opinion, we differ. That's not, that's not a problem. My question ultimately is then that it appears that the SRC not having a plan for bringing neighborhood schools up leaves a vacuum which appears to be, that it's going to be filled by specialty schools, creating a distinct group of educated and uneducated people in our city. And that's not exactly your problem, but on behalf of your perspective, you think that can be filled by charter and specialty schools throughout the city?
I don't, I don't think it's all charter. I don't think charter is the answer to everything. In fact, you know, if we try to charter our way out of this, that's the road to destruction because we don't have enough hype, enough people who can do it. The fact is, we have schools, we know why they're broken. It's not, it's no surprise why a lot of these schools, they don't have any money. If you don't have any money, you can't do anything. You can't provide opportunities for students. You don't have enough staff. You don't have enough resources, I mean, enough materials and things. They're being, I do agree that they're being cash-starved. And when you look at a year like this, where we're all struggling for money and they could come out with a balance, where'd that money? We all need money, everybody, and their schools too. That money should have been out in the classrooms and not sitting around waiting so somebody can get a, you know, attaboy for saying they had a balance.
One last question, real direct. Do you support the SRC as the job it's doing right now, or do you support changing that?
I don't know if I want to answer that question. That's like asking, do I love my wife? Come on.
I'll withdraw that question.
They're in charge of me. I'm not going to do that. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you both very much, and thank you for all that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Corey Bowman, I promise next time I'll call you first. Nettor Center and Daniel Maron, Penn Nettor Center for Community Partnerships. Also Kathy Desmond, PEC. It's Kathy Desmond here. As well as Philadelphia Public Schools Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools, Liz Haver and Carol Kalimnik. After this panel, there's only one more. We worked it down, only one more for those who are still here patiently, and we thank you for your patience. And Tara McCoy, yes, Philadelphia Reads. Thank you very much. Please begin, Corey.
On behalf of Ira Harkavy, the founding director of the Nettor Center for Community Partnerships at the University of Pennsylvania, who could not be here today, I would like to thank the Education Committee for this opportunity to submit this testimony regarding this resolution. We specifically thank Chairwoman Blackwell for her efforts to support all public schools in the city, and particularly the West Philadelphia schools, where Penn and the Nettor Center have been working in partnership to develop university-assisted community schools.
Thank you.
We believe that university, thank you. We believe that university-assisted community schools is a strategy that can help ensure that every student receives a quality education and support services necessary for positive childhood outcomes, and that university-assisted community schools is an approach for how programs and services could be coordinated and adapted so as best to serve particular communities and schools. For approximately 30 years, the Nettor Center for Community Partnerships has worked with our school partners in West Philadelphia to develop innovative university-assisted community schools that educate, engage, empower, and serve all members of the community in which the school is located. University-assisted community schools focus on the school as the core institution, the hub for community engagement. We have worked to bring the vast resources of the university, particularly through service learning courses. Those are courses that engage faculty and students in and with the community to support the education, recreational, health, and social service needs of local public school students, their families, and the broader community. The Nettor Center currently works with five schools in West Philadelphia, Comages, Huey, Lee Elementary Schools, as well as Sayer and West Philadelphia High Schools. The Nettor Center programs operate school day, after-school, and summers. They provide, for example, academic enrichment in core subjects such as STEM and literacy, and support activities in the arts, health and fitness, and academic tutoring and mentoring. University-assisted community schools is a strategy and an approach, not a prescribed set of services. University-assisted community schools by their very nature are coordinated in such a way as best to serve that particular community and school. We take university-assisted very seriously. With the approval of each school's principal and leadership team, our programs work to support existing curriculum and school activities. University-assisted community school activities at a specific school are different from activities at other schools, and also each site changes over time to meet changing needs. All of our university-assisted community school partnerships have comprehensive after-school programs and various school-day STEM partnerships, but the activities vary. For example, in response to our school partners, we're supporting health-science pipeline programs at Sayer and West, and greening and gardening activities at Lee and Comages. These are linked to core academic supports for our students. The following highlights a few of our programs that are part of our university-assisted community schools. Extended learning programs meet the community's needs for safe spaces that provide academic, cultural, and recreational activities for young people as well as adults. Our after-school programs for K-12 students are complemented by adult programming such as financial literacy. College access and career readiness offers comprehensive supports to students, including individualized activities as well as cohort activities, work with students over a period of years, as well as school-wide college access and career readiness. Students are provided academic Students are provided academic tutoring, guidance, and college selection, as well as a better understanding of the mechanics of the college admissions process, including financial aid. Workshops for parents are also included in the program. Dance for Health is another example of a university-assisted community school program. This program was developed by a Penn nursing faculty member and her students in collaboration with Sayer High School students, and it's implemented at the Sayer Recreation Center. Driven by the concern for reducing high levels of obesity and type 2 diabetes in the community, the program uses dance to successfully include more exercise to improve health outcomes. The weekly dance program engages not only young people as the leaders and organizers of the service, thereby improving their own learning, but also engages their families. A Health Sciences Pipeline program is integrated into the high school curriculum at Sayer and West, with opportunities for students to not only have hands-on inquiry-based science at their schools, but also to work on Penn's campus with Penn medical faculty and students in the areas of neuroscience, cardiology, and infectious disease. Also, the School of Veterinary Medicine has become a partner, and all the activities have been supported in the last few years by the School of Nursing. Sayer High School also houses the Dr. Burnett L. Johnson Jr.'s Sayer Health Center, a federally-qualified health center which serves not only students, but also the entire community, and whose chief medical officer is a doctor from Penn. The Dr. Burnett Johnson Sayer Health Center engages faculty and students from Penn Dental Medicine, Penn School of Social Policy and Practice, Nursing and Medicine, as well as other Penn professional schools. We're very excited that Sayer students play organizing and leadership roles in the, in the delivery of health services, and students are also studying to get their CMA certifications. The Netter Center's university-assisted community schools approach has been adapted nationally. We originally had seed funding for various grants to set up replication sites and host training workshops, but now we have regional training centers on university-assisted community schools. One is in Tulsa with Oklahoma University Tulsa, Indianapolis with Indiana Purdue University Indianapolis, and in Hartford with the University of Connecticut. Each of these work with their local public schools and their districts, as well as other higher-eds and community partners in the region to implement university-assisted community schools. Locally, Fend, the Philadelphia Higher Education Network for Neighborhood Development, a consortium of over 30 higher-eds in the region whose staff is housed at the Netter Center, is the convener of the K-16 Partnerships Network. This brings together higher ed faculty and staff who manage partnerships with public schools. The focus is twofold. First, to learn from each other about best practices and models for K-16 partnerships in general, and, as appropriate, work with the school district of Philadelphia to help improve and expand K-16 partnerships across Philadelphia. Fend is a lead partner in the district's newest GEAR Up grant. GEAR Up focuses on, GEAR Up focuses on college awareness and preparation beginning in the middle school years. Under Fend's direction and coordination, Penn, Drexel, Bryn Mawr, LaSalle, Temple, and St. Joseph's Universities will be working with GEAR Up schools through tutoring programs, college visits, and other academic support programs. In addition, Fend has expanded its Vista Supported School Coordinator Program this year to work with 16 schools, up from 13 last year and five in the first year. Their work across the district. These coordinators help bring university and community resources to the schools in a coordinated way to meet the distinct and various school needs. The university-assisted community school strategy focuses on the important priorities noted in this resolution. It is a strategy we've been developing and implementing with West Philadelphia Public Schools and community partners for years, and one that Fend is poised to help develop throughout the city. In conclusion, university-assisted community schools is, we see that as the best way to help provide support, services, and resources for children and their families, advance the learning and development of public school students, as well as the learning of university and college students, and help transform and empower our neighborhoods. The Netter Center would be most pleased to work with Fend, the city, the school district, and the PFT to contribute to the development and implementation of university-assisted community schools in Philadelphia. Thank you again for your time and your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, for inviting me for this, to testify for this resolution. My name is Daniel Maron, and I'm also employed by the Netter Center for University-Assisted Community Schools Partnerships at Comages Elementary School located in southwest Philadelphia. I'm very pleased to be here today to provide some thoughts in the words of the resolution to programs that exist in our public schools, and what we can do to ensure that every student receives a quantity of quality education and support services necessary for positive childhood outcomes. Specifically, the ways that our Comages University-Assisted Community Schools program helps develop, coordinate, and deliver those services in full partnership with the school. Today, I speak from two vantage points. First, being a site director of a university-assisted community schools program places me in the school full-time to oversee a variety of programs and projects during the school day, after-school, and summers that support student academic, social, and emotional growth, as well as student and family health. Second, serving as a member to the Citywide Community Schools Task Force for the Philadelphia Coalition Advocating for Public Schools has allowed me to participate in extensive research, training, and advocacy on successful community school strategies that could support optimal student success. As a university-assisted community school, our goal at Comages is to mobilize the full range of resources of the university and develop additional partnerships that support Comages students and families. Penn's Netter Center aggregates and integrates city, state, and federal funding, such as OST, which comes from the Department of Human Services, 21st Century Community Learning Center, which comes from the Federal Department of Education, SNAP Ed, again, a federal grant that comes from the Department of Agriculture, and other government agencies, as well as other private and corporate gifts, grants, and contracts. Our Comages University-Assisted Community Schools program engages approximately five full-time staff, 10 part-time staff, 50 Penn students, including students who are supported by federal work-study, academic internships, and Penn service-learning courses. So what this translates into is that at Comages, we have reading tutors, we have STEM partnerships, a rich after-school program with culinary arts, food entrepreneurialism, and urban gardening, serving up to 200 students during the school day in their classrooms, and 120 students during after-school time. Integrating the services and the supports in our school is a collaborative process. It starts with conversations with teachers, support staff, and the school administration. Work plans are born out of a needs assessment. I myself go to teachers and principal, as well as students, and ask them literally, what is it that they need? I also conduct home visits with school staff, in part to address any concerns that we have at the school in regards to a particular student, but also to gain intel what's happening in the community. As a site director, I'm advertised around the school as a resource. Organizations outside of the school are often pointed in my direction by school staff. And that's the value you get when you have a site director or a site coordinator in the school, which research shows is a critical element on successful community schools. Site coordinators have the technical skills and competencies in the areas of developing needs assessments, partnerships, and implementation plans. We also know the culture of the school, and this allows us to focus on aligning services and supports to enhance the academic and social outcomes of the students and families. As a mutually beneficial university community school partnership, I believe that we have real power on the ground and we are true advocates for improving the school and the community. And I conclude this by reinstating my assertion that having a site coordinator at the schools to make this work happen is indispensable in regards to adding additional services and supports in schools. And thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. We've been with them from the beginning.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Always a pleasure. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Desmond and Tara McCoy. Thank you. Always a pleasure.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify before this committee today in support of this resolution. My name is Kathy Desmond, and I am the president of People's Emergency Center. People's Emergency Center, or PEC, mission is to nurture families, strengthen neighborhoods, and drive change in West Philadelphia. We offer a continuum of housing and supportive services to women and children experiencing homelessness. These services include emergency transitional and permanent housing, job training, parenting and early childhood education, out-of-school time programs, financial literacy and planning, life skills and technology education. Annually, we serve more than 300 families and over 1,000 children and youth. PEC applauds chairperson, Councilwoman Blackwell, and the rest of the members of this committee for your interest in and commitment to ensuring that every Philadelphia child receives a quality education and the support services necessary for positive childhood outcomes. PEC shares the belief that every child deserves a quality public education regardless of the type of public school they attend. We also believe the necessity of a quality education and supports is even more critical for children and youth experiencing homelessness. Children and youth experiencing homelessness face great challenges. High mobility, precarious living situations, and poverty combine to present significant educational, health, and emotional difficulties. Additionally, homeless students have an increased likelihood of being placed in special education programs, lagging behind their peers academically, repeating a school grade, being suspended, and dropping out of school. The most recent report from the school district's Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Office showed that it identified 4,300 homeless children and youth during the 2013-2014 school year. Eighteen percent of these students were in high school. The majority of the remainder of these students were in grades K through six. Another source of data, the district's Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is administered to youths ages 13 to 18 on a biannual basis, suggests that the number of high school students experiencing homelessness is much higher. Their number was 3,608. The discrepancy in these numbers speaks to the need for a better understanding of how many homeless children and youth there are in Philadelphia. Currently, there is not a common definition of homelessness that is used and/or accepted across all child and youth-serving systems. The result is varying estimates regarding the scope of this issue and a lack of agreement among systems of the resources needed to successfully address it. One thing we are certain of is that without the restoration of social workers, nurses, counselors, and other behavioral health services in the schools, fewer homeless students will receive the service and support needed to ensure their individual learning needs are met, which in turn affects the likelihood of successful outcomes. PEC is also concerned about the level of participation in high-quality early learning programs like Head Start and Pennsylvania Pre-K Counts. According to the Pennsylvania Office of Child Development and Early Learning, only 27 homeless children participated in the Head Start Supplemental Assistance Program for fiscal year 2014, and only 30 children participated in the PA Pre-K Counts for 2014. Lack of regular, stable housing and the resulting transitions can negatively affect children's development, including their physical, social, emotional, and cognitive, cognitive development. Early childhood intervention programs are designed to mitigate these factors for children at risk of poor outcomes. Children and youth who are homeless face many barriers to receiving education, to receiving the education services they need and have a right to. The McKinney-Vento Act is a key piece of legislation that addresses the disparities in education by promoting school stability, educational continuity, and cross-system coordination. This legislation stipulates the regulations the school district must abide by. While the district's Office of Early Childhood and Youth Education for Homeless Children Office works hard to comply with the mandates of McKinney-Vento, the office would be more efficient and effective with addition of more staff. The role of education in the life of a child who is homeless is crucial. In a life filled with uncertainty, school can be a place of safety. Something as simple as a desk to call their own can provide a child who is homeless with a sense of routine and ownership. A free quality education is a right to which children and youth who are homeless are legally entitled. This right, operationalized, has the potential to break the cycle of poverty and homelessness that might otherwise continue. For a child who is homeless, the importance of a quality education is immeasurable. In closing, I just want to stress the importance of evaluating the current status of our public schools, not only for the sake of our children, but for the long-term viability of our city. Countless studies have shown that the return on an investment in quality education is significant. Investing in quality education ensures a competitive workforce, leads to higher earnings, and reduces dependence on public assistance programs. We also know that the quality of a public education can have a positive influence on other socioeconomic issues such as property values, crime rates, housing needs, public health, business development, and civic engagement. All of these things are critical to the social and economic vitality of our city. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. To all this shelter in the state, thank you first. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and, good afternoon, and thank you for inviting me here to speak today, Madam Chair. I'm Tara McCoy, the executive director at Philadelphia Reads. We are a literacy nonprofit in the city, and our whole purpose is on ensuring that children read on or above grade level by the end of the third grade year. We're also a partner with the Read by Fourth campaign, but we've been in operation since 1997. I want to start by sharing a quote of one of my personal mentors during my college years, Marion Wright Edelman. She's quoted as saying, "The question is not whether we can afford to invest in every child, it is whether we can afford not to." And I'm pretty confident that everyone in this room would agree that the answer is no, we can't afford not to invest in our children. That's why we're all here in public service, and that's why we have such a passion for educational justice in our city. I'm also sure that we are all aware of the, the many statistics that illustrate for us how the inequities in our schools are not merely educational issues, but are social and economic issues that can be intervened and in many cases prevented. These are statistics such as the alarming fact that 75% of the children and youth in the juvenile justice system are illiterate, coupled with the fact that over 50% of Philadelphia's children cannot read on grade level. What does a statistic like this look like in real life? Well, over a decade ago, I started working in nonprofit and, and as an educator, teaching in the classrooms. And one of the schools that I worked in was Potter Thomas Elementary School. At the time, the majority of the seventh and eighth grade population was reading at a second-grade reading level, second grade. To make matters worse, as I moved from one school to the next, I went to Kinderton, Clymer, and a couple other schools, I began to see the same situation over and over again. And unfortunately, of those same eighth graders, many of them, many in my opinion, I don't mean hundreds, but to me, more than one was many, they were 15 and 16 years of age. And I asked myself, how could something like this happen? And I'm pretty confident that we, we all know that there, there's a fact that our children are falling through the cracks in our system. And I think our focus needs to be on the fact that there are cracks in our system. And there's an ongoing debate over, you know, who's more to blame, teachers or parents? Parents blame teachers, and teachers blame parents. And that's not everyone, but in many cases, those are the arguments that I would hear in the, in the schools or in the schoolyard. However, collectively, we are all the answer. Even though everyone has a little bit of the blame, we still have the opportunity to fix the problem. And I don't believe that the answer to the problem is a mere just funding our city schools the same way that suburban schools are funded. To me, the odds are much more complex than that. The eighth graders that I mentioned earlier, they enter school at a disadvantage. According to research, children who come from disadvantaged communities and families enter school with a 30-million-word gap, 30-million-word gap in comparison to their wealthier peers. This means that by the time that our students in our city are entering school, they're already behind. And then what happens is that over time, they fall more behind. For example, in terms of leveling the playing field, we need to provide supportive programs and services in our schools. At Philadelphia Reads, we provide literacy tutoring on a weekly basis in 18 schools, and we do so in partnership with multiple corporations across the city. We enlist volunteer employees, and they work one-to-one with each child individually from the beginning of the school year into the end. And what we find is that the children in our program increase their literacy skills two to four months in advance in comparison to their non-participating peers. Likewise, in our summer learning program, we find that 86% of our children either maintained or improved their literacy skill. And this is in comparison to the nationally proven statistics that all children, regardless of social economic status, will lose two to three months of what they gained during the school year over the summer. And we could ask ourselves, you know, what is that, that we need to do in order to make these sort of programs happening in every school? And I'm in agreement. I think that is a question that we should ask, and how do we make something like this happen? I believe we need to make it a goal to work together and build a strategy in determining how and where programs get placed. I'm obviously here in full support of Resolution Number 160- I'm obviously here in full support of Resolution Number 160033. Particularly, one bullet point I want to highlight is, whereas schools' models, school models, programs, and services should be coordinated in such a way as to best serve that particular community and school. I can't tell you that no other part of this resolution resonated with me more than this part, because I do believe that there are a number of nonprofits in the city of Philadelphia who are working hard every day, and we all have the answers. But if we continue to work in isolation, if we continue to work without some sort of oversight and plan, then we won't be able to achieve the goal. In my opinion, parents can't do it alone. Schools can't do it alone. And community programs like Philadelphia Reads, we can't do it alone either. But if we pull together, we can gradually bring our city from a place where we're solely working in intervention into a place where we're working in preventative measures. As Frederick Douglass placed it, "It is easier for us to build strong children than what it is to repair broken men." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools, Liz Haver and Carol Klimnick. Did I say it correctly?
I'm Lisa.
Thanks. Thank you, ladies.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Blackwell, Councilman O. My name is Lisa Haver. Excuse me. I'm a retired teacher, co-founder of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools with Carol. I taught at Roosevelt Middle School, which after about 85 years as a middle school was converted by the SRC to a K-8 in 2013. I taught at Central East Middle School, which is now Feltonville Arts and Sciences. And I taught at Harding Middle School in East Frankfurt, which, in Kevin McCrory's latest story, reported a fill rate of 5% for substitute teachers this year. And I do know for up until at least November, they had zero. Talk about disparities in our system. Harding Middle School, East Frankfurt on Torresdale Avenue. To address your comment, your earlier comment, Chairwoman Blackwell, yes, there are many of us who have observed the actions of the SRC over the past 15 years, the past three in particular, feel that the public schools in Philadelphia are being starved of resources, not just by Harrisburg, but by the spending priorities of the SRC. We hear about crumbling buildings, sick buildings which make students with asthma and adults even sicker. We hear about teachers don't have, students who don't have a full-time teacher. But I want to say, let's not lose sight of the fact that there are really some great public schools out there, schools where teachers are using innovative methods. In your district, I believe, Chairwoman Blackwell, Mitchell Elementary, which was featured in the paper last week, my former colleague Stephanie Andrew Levich is doing great things at that school. You don't have to make a school a charter school to have it do really great things. And you could see by that story, people are really, really dedicated to making these public schools worse. But then you also see the debacle which has ensued after the SRC's decision to outsource the substitutes. It's unprecedented. We've had stories in the Daily News, the Inquirer, Newsworks, the latest story by Kevin McCrory again, teacher became emotional talking about what this is doing to his students, especially the freshmen who are just coming into high school, trying to find their way around, and don't have a full-time teacher. And you wonder why? You know, this contract should have been canceled on November. Why does this company still have a contract? And for me, I don't see any other reason other than the original reason that they signed it, which was to get rid of union members. And I think it's really just a very sad commentary on the leadership of this district, that that would become more important than the needs of the students to be in a safe, orderly climate in which they can learn, because in a lot of these schools, that's not what they're getting. But I want also say that, can't forget how we got here. You know, as I said, past 15 years, we've had so many policies and practices which were not even decided in this city. They're decided by the Gates Foundation, the Boston Consulting Group, many of the corporations and foundations which do funnel money through the Philadelphia School Partnership here. Those agendas are not the agendas which are best for our children. They're based on a corporate model of, I quote, "Dump the losers. Close the schools, create new charters which divert money away from public schools, blame the teachers, and try to balance a budget on the backs of union members." They justify this with data from high-stakes standardized tests, which force students to sit for hours and days, filling in bubbles instead of learning. We know that Harrisburg has not provided the funding that we need, but we cannot ignore the spending decisions that have been made by the SRC themselves. Why are we spending $15 to $20 million this year on three new Renaissance schools and a couple new high schools? You know, we need, we just haven't heard this administration say, "Our commitment is to make every school a good school." We got the transformation model, the redesign model, the Promise Academy, the Renaissance, you know? We need a commitment to make every school a good school. And we're not getting that, and I say this as not just Carol and I, but our other members, we go to every single SRC meeting, every single one. We testify. We look at those resolutions. The decisions that are made are not the decisions that we see as the ones that are best for our children. And the pattern that we have seen, and this is not just in Philadelphia, where you take the democratic process out of how decisions are made in the school district. You have, you know, as I said, the Gates Foundation, the William Penn Foundation, decisions being made in their boardrooms. You have, you know, PSP decisions made in their boardrooms. We have, you know, the SRC, we actually filed a sunshine complaint against the SRC because we weren't seeing the decisions about the schools made in the public meetings. There were just too many violations. You know, when you take people and the community and the parents out of the decision-making process, you don't get decisions which are the best for our children. And so I will close by saying, the people of Philadelphia should not be disenfranchised any longer. And I will just say for myself, I believe the only answer to that is to have an elected school board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We agree.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilman Jones, and Councilman, oh, thank you so much. It's been a very long day. My remarks originally were good morning, and now it's good afternoon, and you guys have been sitting through the whole thing, so more to you. I'm Carol Klimnick. I'm a retired teacher, a PFT member, and, as Lisa said, the co-founder of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. I want to mention something. Out of the three schools I taught at in Philadelphia, two of them no longer exist. One is a hole in the ground. It's in Councilwoman Blackwell's district, the Walnut Center, which was part of Drew School. And it breaks my heart every time I go by there and see the hole in the ground where there was a vibrant school community. I'm a Concerned Community Member, I'm kind of, who has attended almost every district-run meeting at the Worcester School, because what I want to talk about is give you a little bit of background about what's happening at the Worcester School. I've been talking a lot with parents and teachers there. I've been at the Parents of Worcester weekly meetings, and if either of you would like to send staff or to actually come, you would be most welcome. We meet like 8:30 every Tuesday morning, and you would be welcome just to hear what the concerns are of parents. And I'm a constant presence at the SRC meeting, starting with the first one with James Neville in 2001. So it's been going on for a while. Like I said, my testimony is mostly background to kind of fill in what's been happening because it's not getting reported. The district basically, and I know that you're going to have continued conversations with the superintendent and SRC members, so this will give you a little more background. The district has lied since the beginning of this process to turn Worcester into Renaissance Charter School. They gave parents, school staff, and community members the wrong location for the very first meeting held by the district. They did this at Cook and Huey Schools as well. Parents were not given a choice in this process. They were told that their choice would be which charter operator to select. Okay, for Worcester, it seems that they are paired up with Mastery. From the very first meeting, Mastery was represented at district-run meetings. And this is before any pairing up, any RFQs were submitted. A parent from Mastery Cleveland attended the first district-run meeting. A Mastery parent was at every meeting to talk about why they thought Mastery was a good choice for Worcester. Mastery has saturated the Worcester community, from making phone calls to knocking on doors to handing out literature to both adults and children in the schoolyard. One parent said a door knocker asked for her name and then told her she had already signed the petition to turn Worcester over to Mastery. She was outraged, but the person disappeared before she could do anything. Mastery has hired people to make calls and knock on doors. They're called consultants. Mastery has hired a media relations firm. The first district-run meeting held at Worcester was held to introduce Mastery to the school community. All other meetings were held off-site, which is kind of strange when you think about it. The district held a lottery to select five parents to serve on their evaluation committee, which was supposed to go through the process of selecting a charter operator for their school. There were no school-wide meetings to share this information. There was no accountability of the evaluation committee to the Worcester community. Two community members were selected, but no one knows what that process was. Even though parents gave Mastery low ratings, the superintendent still said that they got high marks. So where is the final report of the evaluation committee is what I would want to know. Where is the documentation that any of this has occurred? Okay, the first Worcester meeting, when Mastery made their pitch, they flooded the auditorium as if they had already received the contract to run the school. The sign-in sheets they were asking people to sign at the table going into the auditorium had no ID at the top. When I asked who was collecting the sheets, the people at the desk went silent. Scott Gordon, Mastery's CEO, reached out to parents, parent leaders, they're called Parents of Worcester, or PAL, because he wanted to know what colors they should paint the school and what kind of books are needed at Worcester. He's already acting like he's already gone in the school. Dr. Height took Worcester off the Renaissance Charter List because it was shown that the district used the wrong data. It also became evident that Worcester has made over 50% progress. On Wednesday, January 20th, the night before the contentious SRC meeting, the district held the second of their sessions to listen to parent, teacher, and community ideas for doing an internal turnaround at Worcester. The Mastery turnaround folks were present, led by a Mr. William Jackson, who proclaimed himself to be a Worcester parent. He also stated he was president of the Kelly SAC School Advisory Council. There is no SAC at Kelly, and his children do not presently attend Worcester. Since that became public knowledge, he has disappeared from the spotlight. That meeting was totally disrupted by the Mastery people, including a man dressed in an orange jumpsuit with a pair of handcuffs and chains dangling around his body. He went into a tirade about how we, as women, needed to listen to him. Eventually, he was escorted from the auditorium. Present Worcester parents tried to speak but were drowned out. The district staff could not manage this group, and the meeting broke up with no ideas generated. The next night, the same group attended the SRC meeting. Only one Worcester parent showed up, and I'll tell you why in a minute. This is when Commissioner Sims made her motion from the floor to put Worcester back into the Renaissance Charter Program. Worcester parents did not feel a need to attend because the superintendent had decreed them out of the program. So why should they come when they weren't part of the program? I hope that you can get some answers to the issues that I raised, because they're really critical. And as they, and as Dr. Height just said, they're going to be announcing more turnaround schools this week. What's going to happen to that process? It's such a compromised process. There's no democracy involved, and it's a real concern. And that's why we take it to you as city council members, because hopefully you will be able to get involved and, you know, get some answers. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Excellent testimony. We appreciate it. We will have to break only for three minutes for the stenographer. And our last panel, Carl Moore. We have Ron Whitehorn, Philadelphia Coalition Advocating for Public Schools, Barbara Dowdall, Philadelphia High School for Girls. We have Gail Clouton and Leah Clouton, or Mama Gail. We have Sarah Morningstar, SAP, Darren Spielman, Philadelphia Education Fund, and Andrea Demola, Southeast Philadelphia Collaborative. I think that is the rest of the group. So we need about three minutes for the stenographer, and this will be our last panel. So if anyone else would like to testimony, join us with this group. Thank you.
Our teachers, what is the HRC of the school board doing? Isn't their job, he could took about $500,000, put ads in the papers, and got that. This man is BSing. And not only that, Councilwoman O, you was here before. Don't you feel raped? Councilwoman Jenny Blackwell, I know you, you know I love you dearly. This man has abused and abused you. I can excuse you, but you as a man and the rest of these councilmen who are men, hey, this man has rammed it up us. But I tell you what, y'all, I'm giving you a document to each one of the councilmen to show you the plan and what I said before, but I put it down on paper this time, and I'm giving it to you. But in the end of this document, tell you what I'm going to do. You have this done by the summertime. We're going to demonstrate on each one of the SRC boards' houses. We're going to have barbecue. We're going to demonstrate in their neighborhood. We're going to cook on their lawn. We're going to get locked up. I got money now, and I got a lawyer. His name is Robert Mozena. He will represent myself and 10 other lawyers going along with him. And I think I got enough money to bail out the people who I want to bail out. So it's going to raise havoc. We're going to have many demonstrations throughout the city while the Democrat Convention is here, blocking up the streets and all. Give me what I want, get ready to do. Don't fire him. Keep him here. His job is to do what we ask. SRC must go. Okay? The Republican Committee in Harrisburg, I say, I wouldn't say it, but I say the words were, F you. All right? We have enough. We can do it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's time for my action to start. You will see a fire come out of my ass and cold coming out of my mouth. That's the end of it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Give me a minute. Let me get up.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Ron Whitehorn. I taught in Philadelphia Neighborhood Public Schools. I sent my children to them. I've been an advocate for them for many years. I'm speaking today as a member of the Philadelphia Coalition Advocating for Public Schools, Community Schools Task Force. PCAPS over the last four years has been working for fully-funded public schools that offer equality education for all. We're strong advocates of community schools, which we see as an alternative to the current version of school reform that fails to recognize that equity is at the heart of any serious effort to transform our schools. We applaud the efforts of council to promote a broad dialogue about where our schools are and what's needed to move them forward. are and what's needed to move them forward. We also applaud the initiatives of both Mayor Kennedy and Council President Clark have taken to bring community schools to Philadelphia. We believe a community school strategy can be the way forward for our public schools. Last month, we released our Community Schools platform, which spells out in detail our vision and program. We plan to meet over the next few months with individual council members to share this and to hear your views. The core of the community school idea is that schools must educate the whole child. Education is not reducible to a set of narrow cognitive skills. It must address the social, physical, and emotional, as well as the intellectual needs of children. In the context of communities that have been victimized by economic and racial inequality, it means we must recognize that children who come to school hungry, sick, or traumatized will have real difficulty learning. Community schools thus aim at providing services and supports that will help children and their families develop the capacity for learning. Building partnerships with providers is a big part of what community schools do. But I want to stress that in our view, and in the view of many community school advocates, that's the beginning and not the end of the story. Unless the services and supports are integrated into the life of the school and the surrounding community, the full impact will not be realized. This underlines the need for engaging and empowering students, educators, parents, and community partners in developing and implementing the community school design. This is why we advocate the creation of elected school councils that will have a real voice and substantive power at the school level. Research and experience tell us that when the whole school community is united around a common vision, that's when deep and sustainable change can happen. The community school strategy as we see it also speaks to what kind of teaching and learning needs to happen in our schools. Learning is a social, it learning is social and occurs in multiple ways. The current focus on teaching discrete skills and concepts that are then repeatedly drilled and tested has led to massive student disengagement. We need a curriculum that connects with the reality of students' lives, that allows the development of critical thinking and the imagination, that is culturally relevant and promotes respect for diversity. Community schools provide opportunities for service-based learning that can be laboratories for this kind of instruction. We also see community schools as uniquely suited to develop a school climate based on shared purpose and mutual respect. We believe an approach based on restorative practices that stresses both individual and community accountability is the road forward for ending the school-to-prison pipeline. Finally, I want to emphasize that community schools are not a substitute for faux and equitable funding. Indeed, they will only realize their promise if we win those battles. Nor are they a way to get along without a full complement of professional school staffs, including a nurse, a counselor, and a librarian at every school. We intend to fight for the restoration of these positions and see the development of partnerships as supplementing rather than replacing the services rendered by school staff. We look forward to meeting with council members to talk about these ideas in more depth. Thank you.
Darren Spielman, President and CEO, Philadelphia Education Fund. Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, for this hearing, for convening this hearing about the status of programming and resources in Philadelphia schools, and for the opportunity to testify today. A moment on the obvious. Stable, predictable funding that accounts for annual cost increases is fundamental to developing an equitable, excellent education system, not because adequate funding guarantees quality, but because it is a necessary step. A school and a system require stability and predictability to recruit and retain talented educators and to plan a proper experience for students. A stable, cohesive team is essential. A team that has the chance to work together, building themselves, their program, and their school does better for kids. The research is clear. Operating from crisis to crisis disrupts this basic process. At the Ed Fund, we are dedicated to building collaborative systems for educators within schools and across the city. I would like to take this time today to talk about the Ed Fund's work building intervention systems during the critical middle school years. Research conducted by the Ed Fund and Johns Hopkins University, which followed more than 13,000 Philadelphia students, shows that those of risk at drop, those at risk of dropping out can be identified as early as sixth grade. Students in grades six through eight struggling with one of four early warning indicators, low attendance, poor behavior, failing grade in read English, failing grade in math, any one of those four have only a 15% chance of graduating high school. Based on this information, the district has built an early warning indicator report, available in SchoolNet to every educator in every building. And the Ed Fund has built a comprehensive system to organize schools to intervene on students' behalf. Now, the Ed Fund, in partnership with United Way, is working to ensure that more of our children have the supports they need to stay on track to graduation. Last year, we operated in 17 underserved district schools, representing more than 2,400 sixth-through-eighth grade students and more than 165 middle grades educators, bringing 48% of off-track students back on track to graduation. Our efforts have provided supports and training for educators to match students who are at risk of dropping out with existing school resources they need, and we have worked with local nonprofits to help fill gaps in school-based services. City council's concern about the equitable distribution of resources in our schools is one that the Ed Fund is dedicated to improving on the ground with the early warning system. While we have started with a select group of schools, our model is flexible enough to fit diverse needs, and we plan to expand to additional schools in the region. To be clear, the early warning system does not replace basic positions in buildings. Rather, it organizes essential staff and school partners around information central to student success. Ideally, our support services targeted through the early warning system will be used to alleviate non-academic barriers, as well as academic barriers, to success. Our children face challenges every day that interfere with their ability to learn and with our teachers' ability to provide quality instruction. With our technical support for teachers and administrators, and targeted strategic supports for students, we can work with the city to ensure that every child is given an equal opportunity to reach their full potential.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, ladies.
Thank you for still listening. We appreciate it. My name is Wendy Glazer. I'm the President Board Chair of ASAP After-School Activities Partnerships. As you may know, ASAP was founded by Marcin Mannelman about 12 years ago with the goal of providing fun, sustainable activities for children during the often dangerous after-school hours from 3:00 to 6:00. These programs were not set up to replace what children were taught in school, but to complement what happens in the classroom with learning activities that develop academic, social, and emotional skills. ASAP has developed strategic partnerships with the school district, city agencies, community organizations, parents, and funders. Since ASAP's inception, we've served 60,000 kids in grades K through 12, about 70% of whom attend Philadelphia public schools and live underserved neighborhoods. Through the years, ASAP has refined the scope of work to four initiatives: chess, debate, Scrabble, and drama. Today, we support 350 clubs a year, serving 5,000 students across the city. The average club has been in operation for four and a half years, which provides needed continuity through many transitions. Each fall, ASAP publishes a directory of after-school programs in the Philadelphia Daily News, which reaches about 110,000 households. ASAP's director, directory contains more than 1,000 site listings, and also can be found on our website with search features and filter options, of course. City residents without home internet access can find a shortcut to ASAP's directory on the desktop of every computer in 79 Key Spot locations. Thanks to the efforts of Code for Philly and the City of Philadelphia's Office of Civic Technology, smartphone users can access ASAP's directory by downloading the Philly 8311 mobile app. We maintain strong relationships with principals, teachers, and volunteers, providing training and ongoing instructional support, as well as organizing many competitive events and performance opportunities for students to meet like-minded peers across Philadelphia. We are working hard to maintain our level of services in a landscape of funding crises and closing schools. In early 2013, the SRC voted to close 23 Philadelphia public schools, a move that would require 9,000 students to relocate to new receiving schools in September 2013. Less than two weeks after the SRC's decision, ASAP was joined by Mayor Nutter and Superintendent Height to announce its commitment to increasing after-school programs at 40 different receiving schools during the 2013 and 14 school years. High school junior Russell joins nearly 300 classmates after their school closed as a newcomer at the High School of the Future in West Philadelphia. He was in 11th grade. Russell's skepticism about his new school changed one day when a flyer for the Debate Club caught his eye. Whereas his former school's closing made him feel helpless and alone, he felt empowered during debate matches, particularly during crossfire rounds. "Debate helped me make friends and feel accepted at my new school," he said. Russell graduated from the School of the Future in 2014 and is currently a freshman at Temple University. We have a lot of kids who've had that transition, and we're very proud of that. As of May 2014, ASAP exceeded its program goal, serving 1,100 students like Russell through 75 after-school programs in 45 receiving schools. In December 2014, ASAP received the GlaxoSmithKline Impact Award for creating successful transitions for youth in receiving schools. My coworker, Sarah Morningstar, who is the head of ASAP Debate and Drama, is going to talk about some of our successful programs.
For our testimony, we thought it would be useful for you to hear about some examples of the successful programs we've had, working with different school models, since that was reflected in the resolution. So at Bartram High School in southwest Philadelphia, plans were made to integrate chess programs into the school day. Teacher Viliya Abdul Latif's after-school chess club emerged from these in-class strategic thinking activities and has been a bright, positive space for her students. Jabar, a freshman, joined chess club after he was suspended. Now, he is one of their top players and a mentor for the younger students. "It keeps me out of trouble," says Jabar. "It's a lot of responsibility." Members of the Bartram community have embraced the chess club. Teachers want to be participants in the club, while an alumni group, the Men of Bartram, have volunteered to support and feed the students during their after-school times. "It's a Bartram awakening," Ms. Abdul Latif reflected. ASAP debate programs have been integrated into the School Day at Science Leadership Academy. This is a magnet school right in Center City, very different from Bartram. Students have the option to take a debate class each year as an elective, as well as to be involved in the after-school debate club. Students enrolled in the class also compete in the ASAP-organized Philadelphia Scholastic Debate League, where they have won the top team in school awards two years in a row because of that extra class time. Debate programs have also been successful in neighborhood elementary and middle schools. As they tackle advanced topics like climate change and Supreme Court decisions, middle school-aged youth have the opportunity to receive feedback from high school debaters who volunteer as judges. Dante, who started debating in sixth grade at Huey Elementary in West Philadelphia, is now a sophomore at Constitution High School, one of the district's citywide admission schools. Dante is an active member of Constitution's debate team, but he also volunteers as an assistant coach at Huey, making sure the younger students have the same opportunities he did to explore new topics and develop their own unique voices. ASPIRA of Pennsylvania currently operates five charter schools in North Philadelphia that serve predominantly Latino student populations. This year, ASPIRA and ASAP Drama have joined forces for a groundbreaking initiative to unite all five schools in one dual-language production of the musical Aladdin. As many as 200 students pre-K through 12th grade and 40 teachers are expected to participate in the Spanish and English mashup of the classic Disney movie, set to hit the stage on March 24th. Students are even incorporating elements of their own culture into the play. When Aladdin and Jasmine get married, the ring bearer and flower girl will be dressed as miniature versions of the bride and groom in the Latino tradition of novicesitos. In addition to being a fun, creative outlet for students, ASAP Drama also nurtures young people's reading abilities, powers of expression, teamwork skills, and cultural knowledge. ASAP Scrabble began as a citywide literacy initiative, as city council annually declared October Philly Plays Scrabble Month, starting in 2006. Since then, ASAP has developed Scrabble activities that complement classroom instruction and align with the citywide Read by Fourth initiative. To meet the growing need for resources for English language learners in the city, ASAP has recently launched a new Scrabble-based curriculum to engage students and improve literacy skills and student confidence. Ms. Mateo, a fourth-grade teacher at Fell Elementary in South Philadelphia, works with a small group of students from Southeast Asian households in her Scrabble club. She describes her experience. "The kids get excited and feel empowered when we play different word games and Scrabble Slam. At the beginning of the year, I had a quiet fourth-grade ELL student who wasn't quite ready to play Scrabble yet, but I encouraged her to come into my club. She is really thriving. She engages with her peers and even led the circle game with the rest of the club." ASAP has completed a 2015-2017 strategic plan that includes providing even more intensive resources to neighborhood schools serving low-income populations, vulnerable middle school students, and English language learners. With the help of the School District of Philadelphia Office of Strategic Partnerships and the citywide OST data collection efforts of Philly Boost, we plan to focus on maximizing our impact in schools that need us most by having all four of our programs, chess, debate, drama, and Scrabble, in one school building. This will provide an opportunity for students of all ages to work on academic, social, and emotional skills in a safe environment. We look forward to further discussions with City Council's Committee on Education to further discuss our strategic partnerships with schools and our goals for future youth outcomes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Andrea Demola, and I'm the Director of the Southeast Philadelphia Collaborative at United Communities. Thank you so much, councilmembers, for continuing to stay and listen, and I will try to summarize as best as possible to get us all out of here quickly. So one of the things that the Southeast Philadelphia Collaborative does, or SEPSCI as I refer to us, we coordinate partnerships in five different schools in South Philadelphia. So we're at South Philadelphia High School, Furness High School, Newland Fell School, John Taggart School, and Verne Washington School. And so I'm proud to say that some of those partnerships include ASAP, the Ed Fund, and other folks who have spoken today. So with our funding, we were originally funded to coordinate services with older youth, and that began in 2011, so we really focused on the two high schools then. Since 2014, we've incorporated the three K-8 schools as feeders into the high schools to really see kind of what this coordination work looks like. Most of the schools that we work with have access to at least 10 different services that are offered to students, and these organizations run programs and are actively engaged in our networks. It's possible there are more that we're not aware of that haven't connected with us. But one of the things that I think is important for this group to talk about is the fact that this, these organizations that are outside of the schools have been receiving funding for decades, and nonprofits providing services for youth are things that have existed and will continue to exist. And so for our perspective, it's really important for them to really connect with schools, to make sure that youth are being served in a really appropriate and connected way, to make sure that partners and schools are working together. And I think these partners also provide services that even fully funded, well-functioning public schools are not necessarily able to provide. The five schools that we work with, so I'm more of an expert in South Philadelphia, where we've always welcomed immigrant and refugee populations, and that continues. On average, our schools have more than 25% English language learners in our schools, and those represent over 20 languages and dialects. So we're not just talking about a quarter Spanish speakers. We have a really strong diversity of languages. At each of our schools, 100% of students are economically disadvantaged, and I think this just taps into the number of barriers that our students and families face in South Philadelphia, and how important it is to really provide the supports that will help them overcome some of those things. They turn to community organizations a lot of times to find the financial, social... They turn to community organizations a lot of times to find the financial, social, economic support that they don't get out of a school building or necessarily out of government. And so, community organizations also serve as really a trusted partner when there's not trust for the school, or for the district, or for authority otherwise. So, I think it's really important that, to support young people, we also acknowledge that they need more than just academic learning. We look at the nationally-recognized pillars for youth development, and those are things like physical health, social and emotional connection, workforce development, and, I think that's, those are my four, sorry, and leadership opportunities. So, again, these are things that we try to ensure exist in the five schools that SEPSE partners with, and I hope that they continue to exist in other schools as well. School leaders who recognize the needs of students beyond the classroom are the ones that welcome partners into the building because they realize they can't provide everything, and those are the schools that tend to dedicate time and energy into community partnerships and have more partners than other schools. And that's kind of where we see some misalignment of the number of partners in schools. It's really the investment of those leaders. And also, having a coordinating entity like SEPSE, or like the Nutter Center, or some of the different organizations that provide this, are able to help facilitate that work. I think the School District has invested in the Office of Strategic Partnerships, which is helpful, but they have limited capacity to really individually serve every single one of the district schools. And I just want to end on the, one of the greatest successes that we've seen in our years of working with schools is just a shift in positive school climate and culture. Even with layoffs of teachers and counselors and nurses, which I do not support and don't think are positive things, having outside organizations that partner with schools just increases the number of staff in the building, and that's how a lot of our principals see it. They see that they have doubled staff even when they have cuts. And so, having all of those caring adults that can serve as mentors, serve as confidants, or can simply just be a reason for kids to come to school, I think, is what really creates a good school model. And, you know, in my mind, that's what our schools should look like. We should have buildings full of caring adults that are there to work for kids.
All righty, we have two more people, but we'll, Councilwoman Ginn wants to ask a question, so we'll allow that, then the last two people, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. So, I'll keep it very quick, but there were a couple of questions that I wanted to pick up, and I know some people had to leave. For the panelists in front of me, I'm really interested in this issue of the collaboration with the School District, particularly amidst all the budget cuts. So, who exactly is your contact person at the school-based level? I understand that you work with the Office of Strategic Partnerships, but who do you actually work at with at each individual school?
It depends on the school. Generally, it's the principal, but a lot of times it's a school counselor.
For us as well, it really varies. We're trying to get to a place where we have better relationships with the administrators in the schools, so that we can have all four of our programs there. At this point, it's much more common that we have a connection to a, one or two staff members in the building, who might just be a teacher who's very passionate about being a debate coach and wants to use those resources.
So, all your programs are after-school, though? They require you to be onsite after-school? Yours is...
Not all of ours are, so some of the services that we consider, like truancy case management, which is not obviously a program, but clearly supports attendance and things like that. So, and at some of our schools, like South Philly, there's West, which provides mental health, or Access Matters provides sexual health during the school day.
So, for clarity, the questions that I had were, because you rely on the counselor, has the shift around some of the counseling services impacted your ability to work closely with the school at all?
Yes.
Can you give some details and explain how?
Sure. I would say, we have, you know, so, one great example is Otis Hackney actually let one of his counselors really work with us and kind of encourage that as a part of the support that his counselor provided to the school. We've struggled a little bit where schools have part-time counselors, because as far as us trying to coordinate services in the building, it's just not a priority when the counselor doesn't have five full days to even dedicate to the students in the building. So, I would say that, I mean, the counselor tends to just be the point person, because they're easier to get in touch with since principals are overworked. But when we've had experiences of part-time counselors, tendency not to be able to get into buildings, even if...
And are you a DHS truancy contractor? Like, you deal with cases that come through there?
The organization I work for is, so I work for United Communities, which is a social service agency, and I direct all of our partnership...
And have you seen any incidences of truancy, of families who are referred into the truancy program, perhaps because they're not, like, they have a child who has a chronic illness, or there's an absence at, like, of staff that might be able to help them with counseling or behavioral outbursts, or those kinds of things?
I mean, I think for some of the illness things, we, that's one of the things that United Communities specifically has tried to do, so they're initiating kind of this first-tier process once a student has five to nine absences. And again, they try to work with counselors to get that list of which students have five to nine absences, to avoid the 10 unexcused absence referral to truancy court. We have had a few cases where, especially in high schools, like, women are on maternity leave and just didn't get the paperwork filed correctly, and so, we've been able to avoid referring them to truancy court. I think more likely what actually happens is, students have 10 or more absences, and as far as we know, they should be going through the process and don't get a referral until, say, June, at which point it's kind of useless to try and provide support.
Thank you. And then, my other question is for the gentleman who has to leave, Mr. Whitehorn. Just some clarity, like, do you have a figure for the cost of the community schools program that you think would be needed to operate it at some level of sustainability? Or, do you see the community schools program as not relying more on costs and be more of a partnership-based program? How does money factor into the community schools' effects?
I don't have a figure, but I think the main additional costs are the school coordinator. We also would argue that an additional staff person who would do community engagement, really, community organizing, that could be an important piece of it, too. But, paying the salaries of those people would be the added cost. And I'd add that there is, there are new funding streams available for community schools, particularly with the passage of the recent ESEA renewal. But, I don't have a dollar figure. But, the services, I think, that's not a contracting out, that doesn't cost the district additional money.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was primarily the question. And then, the last one was just for Ms. Clemnick, who came up earlier, but just to let you know that our office has formally requested an investigation by the City Ethics Officer, Integrity Officer, into what happened at Worcester, and that, as well as an overall review of the School Reform Commission's ethical practices. I think that they're long overdue. But, speaking for myself, because this is a, you know, a private review of the SRC, I would strongly encourage anybody who has serious concerns about what occurred to please submit some written testimony and some written documentation about all of this to the Chief Integrity Officer. I think that would be extremely helpful. Thank you. Thank you very much. In the absence of the chair, we'll call the next witnesses.
Do you want to go?
Good afternoon. Thanks for being so patient.
I have a doctor's appointment.
Thank you for being so patient. If you could just state your name and proceed with your testimony.
Hello, my name is Coleman Poses. I have spoken three times at the past four SRC monthly meetings about a possible Worcester turnaround. My reason for coming here today is to give you a brief description of some of my testimony at these SRC meetings, as well as an impression of the SRC's response. People on both sides of the possible Worcester conversion expressed similar attitudes about several issues concerning a possible Worcester turnaround. One was that resources had been increasingly in short supply at the school. Another was that the conversion of Worcester to a turnaround would most likely result in an improved physical plan, and students would have new, up-to-date textbooks. Members of the School Reform Commission have expressed the concern that additional money would not solve Worcester's problems, but the data suggests otherwise. In 2007, 41.4% of the Worcester students were performing at the proficient or advanced levels in math, and 28.4% of those students were performing at those levels in reading. 2011 was the high watermark of state funding to the district, although the money was still insufficient according to the state funding formula then in existence. In that year, those numbers shot up from to 58% proficient in math, and 44 or better, and 44% in reading. Four years of extreme fiscal austerity, however, which saw the reduction of seven teachers, one counselor, and 52% of the supply budget at Worcester, had subsequently reduced these numbers to single digits. Nevertheless, over the last three years, Worcester still managed to post positive gains even after last year's extremely difficult revised PSSA exam. How do these numbers compare to those of Mastery, the charter school company that the SRC invited to take over the administration of Worcester? One way to compare the progress is to look at the Mann Elementary School, the only Mastery school among Worcester's 19 peers, schools with similar grade levels and demographics according to the School District of Philadelphia's School Progress Report. It is true that Mann scored higher in academic achievement during this time, earning 28% of all possible points, whereas Worcester scored only 7%. But Worcester's score showed an improvement from 5% the previous year, and an improvement from 4% from the 2012-2013 school year. These increases are certainly modest, but they follow a continuous positive trend, as compared with Mann's downward trajectory from 57% to 28%. There seems to be a belief among the SRC members that something magical happens when a charter school takes over a district school. It is reminiscent of the folk tale about stone soup, where two travelers convince a stingy but gullible townsfolk that the rock in the duo's possession had certain powers to make a delicious soup, but it would be even more delicious if the citizens themselves provided the meat, bones, vegetables, et cetera. The problem is that in the case of stone soup, the rock is inert, it does no harm, and everybody wins. Not so when charters are added to the mix. As Marge Neff has said, "This is a zero-sum game. If charters gain money, then the district loses money." Many of these charters run high fund balances at the end of the year, which kind of surprised me before with David Hardy, you know, basically claiming that they don't. The many, the City Controller estimated that the reserves to be, those reserves to be $117 million in 2014. In the case of Mastery schools, those fund balances run over 40% of their expenses, whereas the district's reserves run around 2%. And that was only this year, because last year they had a negative reserve. In the case of Mastery schools, those fund balances run over 40% of those expenses, whereas the district's reserves run around 10, 2, uh, wait a second. Yeah, I already read that. A healthy nonprofit's reserve should run around 10% of expenses. Any additional reserve should go back to the district. It would not be a panacea for student achievement, but it would go a long way toward easing the pain that public schools such as Worcester have been experiencing. Thank you.
Good day. My name is Barbara McDowd Dowdell. I'm retiring as editor of the Alumni News Philadelphia High School for Girls. I am happy about this resolution. I just wanted, there are a couple of things on there I thought I should point out, where it says Renaissance Magnet and Vocational, we would talk about career technical schools today, not vocational. And as a former facilitator at the Governor's Institute Improving Literacy and Career Technical Education, I would point out, most of the texts for CTE programs are written at a higher level than anything else that students read in high school. So, it's not really a program for students with difficulties for the more proficient readers. And then, where we have, if a neighborhood school is set to be closed, the community should be notified before the decision. I would say the community would also have the right to ask what has been provided to the school leading up to that decision to close it. Okay, let me get back to my original testimony. "I'm profoundly grateful today to have the opportunity to be heard in support of a school system that provided my education from age four through 17, Fittler Elementary, Roosevelt Junior High, and Girls High, and my professional service as teacher of English from 1974 through 2010." Schools too many to mention. I would say when I retired, I did volunteer with the Scrabble program at Girls High. "I'm increasingly fearful that the proud accomplishments of the Philadelphia Public Schools and its graduates over the decades, having suffered loss of both resources and reputation, stand to be replaced by an incomprehensible mishmash of inequitably provided centers of learning, some showered with money, materials, staff, and housed in gleaming new buildings, and others left to crumble, bereft of even basic needs, until abandoned to one of a dizzying array of corporate providers or simply shuttered. Whether neighborhood school, magnet, or career technical school, all have suffered from lack of both financial and moral support from the School Reform Commission, an entity ostensibly created to bring improvement and hope to our city schools. Some who have brought honor to our city include Judith Seitz Roden, I misspelled that in my text, it's I-N, first woman president of an Ivy League college, University of Pennsylvania; Pinky Gordon Lane, the first African-American poet laureate of Louisiana; Bibi More Campbell, New York Times bestselling author; Shirley Clark Franklin, first woman mayor of Atlanta, Georgia; Gloria Bloom Alred, noted civil rights attorney; Anne Hobson Pilot, the first African-American principal harpist in the Boston Symphony; Edith Houghton, first, last, and only woman scout for the Philadelphia Phillies; Jill Scott, award-winning singer, songwriter, poet, and actress; and I need to add Constance Clayton, first woman, first African-American superintendent of Philadelphia Public Schools; Blondell Reynolds Brown, multi-term member of Philadelphia City Council; Anita Green, mother of newly-arrived council member Derek Green; and then, because James Roebuck was here this morning, Myra Roebuck, my classmate at Girls High and cousin of James Roebuck. Each of these women attended the Philadelphia High School for Girls, a magnet school, entering upon its 168th year of operation. In a time when the school could draw highest-achieving students from all over the city, many of whom came from the most modest of circumstances, but who were provided the opportunity to enroll in a school rich in learning opportunities, not just in academics, but in art, music, drama, and competitive sports. Among the essential blessings in their day was a fully-resourced and staffed school library. Today, every field has suffered diminishment, and the library at Girls High is entering its fourth year of closure. And where did these amazing women come from? They came from Philadelphia Public Schools, elementary, junior high, and middle schools, all of which also had programs in art, music, drama, and sports. And the physical education facilities were limited, and schoolyards, mainly concrete, all had that essential feature, a school library with a certified teacher librarian. The time spent in that magical place with the guidance of a professional librarian helped prepare those youngsters for later distinction. Today, 95% of our schools lack this resource. Across the city line, suburban schools boast this gift. Magnet, neighborhood, and career technical schools let us provide our youngsters that to which they are entitled. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for your advocacy, especially around school libraries and a whole host of other issues. We're going to try and do our best to make sure that these resources get prioritized, clarified, and that we try to do what we can to make sure that they're back in our schools. So, thank you both very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that concludes the formal panel, and we have additional members of the public. So, if you'd like to come forward, Ma Magal. And please state your name for the record. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Leah Cloudin, community member. One thing about my family, my mother and my father, is that we really pay attention to what's going on with this education piece. And, you know, I listened to the panel today discuss about the community schools, and to me, it sounds a lot like middle school, when we had trade, when we were exposed to home economics, stuff like that. And we actually had community people working with us. It wasn't people from the University of Penn and, you know, from those universities coming in and doing their program. And with Penn, the things that Penn... the guy from Penn was saying, it was... to me, it was almost like a dream, because those students that are at those schools that do have that community, community school, per se, as far as the clinics and everything, are failing. They're down... they're under 12... they're down to 12.5%. And that's just a disgrace. For as many years as they've been in the schools, it's just awful. I never thought I'd be one to jump on the bandwagon with my mom and say that Dr. Height needs to go, but he needs to go. What he's doing is a disgrace. He's not improving on any level when it comes to the children, and not just those 5,000 that he wants, that he want to create great seats or the high-quality seats. We have more, a whole lot, thousands, over 100,000 students, that he should also be concerned with. I'm sorry if I'm a little all over the place. I'm trying to just... In far as the charter schools, far as the funding, the district gives the charter schools $8,000 to run, for each child's seat. So, there's $4,000 as far as the difference. So, I understand why it seems like he's pushing it. I don't know what happens with the $4,000 that's left. I don't know if he's making money off of...
They get the... the others get that. They actually goes to the charter school.
Oh, goes to the charter school now?
We just found that out.
Okay. Because before, it wasn't going to the charter school. It was just that the charter school got received $8,000 for a $12,000 seat.
That's what we were told.
And if a child leaves the charter school, the money still stays over there for whatever seat that they may need to open up, which is insane. If the money is for the student, it should follow the student. So, basically, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Gail Cloudin, known in the community as Mama Gail, at the UN as Mama Gail, other countries as Mama Gail. I created Parents Corner Cafe and Community Welcome Center at Huey School. And Helen, you've been there. We've improved on it since you were there. As I came here today, as I passed people in the streets, as I passed the homeless shelter, as we parked at the convention center, I looked at the young women going in and coming out of the homeless shelter at 1320, I believe it's Arch Street. It hurts to see it, and these numbers will only increase if we don't do something differently than what's being done. As we passed the courthouse and saw the folks that were going in and out, and the family court watching folks that were going in and out. And I remember one day accompanying a parent that comes and advocates to 1801 Vine Street to court, and I couldn't believe that everybody that was there was black. There was no one other than black families there at 1801 Vine Street, and I couldn't believe it. There was one Cambodian family that was there, and they were black Cambodians. I think that, actually, I did my prayer prior to coming over to sit here this time. And I always pray for guidance, and certain things that I ask for. As I stand here, and I keep saying, "I'm standing for these families, for those that can't speak for themselves, those that won't, and those that don't speak for themselves." We created a place in Huey School that's considered a failing school. And I find it ironic that many of the West Philly schools right now are failing, as people are coming here, not only from all over the country, but the world. People are moving to Philadelphia. And I find it ironic, living and growing up, being born in West Philadelphia, watching how West Philadelphia is changing. So, being based at Huey School is really, really important for me, because I'm able to see what's really going on. Being at city council, being at the school board for years and years and years, and speaking out at the school district for years, since Dr. Clayton days, and also working for the district as a consultant, as a trainer, with standing-room-only audiences many times. I've seen it, but I've never seen it like this. And how do we come here and see this audience? And I came here, and this audience was full of people that called themselves "resources" for our community. It was three black. I couldn't believe it. Resources for whom? If parents are so important, and if community... because I'm saying, every time I hear the word "community," let me come to your community. Let me come where you live. Everybody's coming in saying, "Let me help you people. If you stop being racist, this wouldn't be." How do we change this? We change it by getting people that look like those children, not to just look like them, but that care about them, in front of them, and around them. I have children that people bring down to me in the school for a coat. The school district and I have partnered. They gave me a bunch of coats, sneakers, new sneakers. I give out shoes, people from the community, from my community. There are struggling, many of them, because they haven't had the opportunities, but they still give us what we need. We have fresh fruit every week. The children come in. There are children that come down and say, "Mama Gail, and today I may not be there because I'm here," but they come down and say, "I just wanted to see you." They come down, some come down and say, "I need a hug." Teachers give them a pass to come get a hug. People give them a pass to come and sit and have a timeout. This is like a home in the school. I'm not talking about clinical services, because that's not what I do. But love is what they need, and to keep paying and paying and paying... I want to say this. We give out clothes. People from the community are donating new and used clothes. We have children that have accidents in the school that are being brought down. I go into the tote and pull out clothes that they can wear. A child came in, we gave her a coat a few days before. She came back, teacher brought it down. She had her brother's shirt on. She didn't want to take off her coat. Went in the tote and found a shirt that was pretty, put it on a blouse that was pretty, put it on and sent her back to school. We are feeling the need, and guess what? Nobody's giving me a dime. All right? This came from... everything in that room, Helen, came from me, and I'm not working. I have not worked for the district in two years. I have no income. Every piece of furniture that's sitting in there came from me. Every dollar came from my 60th birthday, from people giving me, and then people from the community donate every week. That's community. So, when people talk about the resources that we need, guess why? Believe it or not, we have black psychologists, we have black... everything that everybody else has, we have... why are they locked down? 21 years ago, what they're talking about, I did. I was based in Heston School. I created Parents Corner in Heston School 21 years ago. I sat down and I wrote... I had to figure out how many years ago it was. And I got resources for people. They're already paid. But while we're talking about... and it was called "parent involvement." That's what it was called. So, while people talking about coming in and giving us services, while people are talking about how trifling those people are, because they don't do what they need to do, don't make it easy for them then. Let them take their children to clinics, let them take them where they're supposed to go. Don't come into schools. Let the schools be a place of learning, education. Everybody's getting away from the education. We got people coming in, doing all kinds of stuff. This man that was sitting here from Neder, I went out there and I asked him, "Do you know how poorly your school... these schools are doing that you're based in? Have you looked at the statistics?" I'm familiar with the schools. Okay, that's all I need to know, because I want to look at the statistics, because I know right now Sarah's failing. I know Huey's failing. I know many of the schools that people talking about they partnering with, they're failing. Why are they failing if people are just doing research? We don't have enough time for more research. How many more years must our children fail? They have every right that everybody else's children have for success, and they're not getting it, because everybody's trying to pimp off them. Everybody's trying to make a little bit more money off of them, and we're not going to have it. And that's what I want you all to know. We're not going to have it. We've been real, real kind and nice and sat back all quiet and saying, "Could you do this, and could you do that?" Let me tell you, emphatically, those days are over. Mr. Moore was angry. I'm not angry. I'm serious. I'm not angry. I'm frustrated sometimes, because people really believe that we are too dumb to take care of ourselves. We took care of everybody's babies in America. We raised everybody's babies. And then you say, "We can't take care of ourselves," after drugs have been dumped in our communities? Come on. Yes, those children have problems, but guess what? Those parents need to be taken by the hand. And one thing I learned a long time ago, when I did the project for Parents Union, it was partnered. Parents Union and Citizens Committee on Public Education was paid through Fels Foundation. It was $100,000 a year, $25,000 a site, and all it was, was a site coordinator, who coordinated where people... my job was to train them, put them in a school, train them. The schools were Heston, Cramp, and Kenderton, three different communities. And guess what? They were all the same. Parent involvement was low, and that's why we chose them. This is the key to the whole thing, and we getting away from it. Talk about community, community, community. When a whole lot of people here talking about community that live in my community. And I wake up, and I see it all the time. When you've been going back and forth to court for two years, and you see the people that have the crimes perpetrated against them are black, and the people over there that perpetrated the crime, or accused of perpetrating the crime, is black, and the people up there are white, something's wrong with that picture. And I look at the people that work in your offices, guess what? One thing that I'm very clear about is that we have to give ourselves jobs. We deserve jobs like everybody else. And while people are talking about upkeep, why do you allow a school to go down and not give them the services, or provide the work, the labor that needs to be done? I watch mechanics after they do a job, sit outside for two, three hours, two, three hours, sometimes four hours after a job, instead of going on to the next job. Unless they're on break, or unless they're off, they shouldn't be sitting there, should go to the next one. How do you not give engineers what they need when they're based in a school? How do you not give people what they need if you say, "Education is important"? I don't have anything else to say, because I'll get tired, and you'll get tired of hearing me, and I know you know what I'm talking about. But I said it before, Helen, the last time we were here, get those of us that are here and know this thing inside and out. I know you have the open forums, but you need to have some closed forums with people that know this stuff, because that's the fair thing to do. And I'm tired of our children being pimped.
Thank you very much. And I don't think there are any other witnesses for public testimony. So, thank you very much for sharing your comments on behalf of the public.
You're welcome.
With that, the Committee on Educational Recession through the call of the chair, and thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.